Good evening, everyone. It is 5:30 PM and we're going to call our work session to order. I'm so pleased to have you here for our work session. We're very excited about some of the information we're going to receive tonight. Just a reminder, the work session is an opportunity for the council to hear information. Most of the items that are on our agenda will not be voted on this evening, but it will give us an opportunity to talk with each other and to ask questions and learn more about items that may be coming up on future agendas. We're going to begin with the first item, which is the last council meeting in December. Currently, that is scheduled and noticed for December 26th, which is a holiday. And in talking to the mayor and staff, it's been suggested to move that meeting up to December 19th. So I want to open up the floor to see and let everyone check their calendars and see if it would be acceptable to you to issue a new notice for our second meeting in December.
I have Madison Utilities, that's it. It is at 5:30.
And so the other option that historically has been done is December 27th. And we have some people who I think are going to be out on vacation right after Christmas.
What if we made it 6:30 instead of 6:00?
How would we start it at 6:30 on the 19th?
As long as there are no delays between here and the Madison we have.
Or you get an extra one.
Just kidding here. Yeah, HCD time, usually those meetings are an hour-ish, so.
I really need you to drive properly because I'm in my district.
Yes, sir. Karen, is December 19th at 6:30 okay with you?
6:30?
Okay, so we'll notice that for December 19th at 6:30. All right, next, we have Restore Our Roads and the mayor.
Yeah, I just wanted to, one of the things Renee asked me to talk about was it's a little bit, I'd say early to talk about since there's no real, it's fairly grand now right now, but Huntsville had done a Restore Our Roads project. They had basically taken, when Madison did, our half cent for James Clemons and our half cent that we use for infrastructure and capital stuff, Huntsville just raised sales tax a penny. And a lot of what they used that for was their road projects. They basically put 125 million up. The state matched that 50%, and they did about $250 million for the road projects. Huntsville's ready to do a Restore Our Roads project too. And they came to us and the county and talked about which projects would be projects that we should all look at and possibly go back to the state, but this time ask for 60-40 split. So in talking with them, there are seven projects that we've looked at, somewhere a little under $800 million as far as projects. Now, this is over about a 15-year period probably, with the major one being the I-565 and Water Parkway intersection, which would be over $400 million by itself. So in looking at those, there's three projects that kind of support Madison directly. The I-565, six-laning from basically Wall Tran to the county line. Highway 72, which of course is Providence to county line, and then Resolute Way, which is in essence taking Madison Boulevard where it goes up, going east, goes up over I-565. They're going to take that directly into Redstone Arsenal and not have to go, you know, to basically get into Gate 9, but take a direct route instead of having to get back on the Parkway and then turn in there. It's very dangerous for our citizens. And so those three projects would be something that they've asked, hey Madison, would you look to possibly participate in that? Obviously, we made no guarantees that we would do anything. We've talked about, yes, we'll talk to council eventually, obviously. Two things, Huntsville's going to do it regardless. And then secondly, they know the main project that we've done, which we just approved, which was our interchange. It gives another full interchange flowing at, at Zer, into town of Madison. So just to give you guys an idea, I thought a couple of things. One, when they do percentages of the county, Huntsville's 55%, Madison County's about 30.5%, and Madison has grown to 15.5%. So as you saw, one of the placeholders we put when we gave you the list the other day was just at some point over the next few years. I'm going to go back a step. Highway 72, we've already put our money in. We received an ATRIP project, if I'm not mistaken, for $3 million from county line to Hughes to Six Lane that. Basically, they said, please don't do, all of that said, please don't do that, hold on to it. That will be your part of the Highway 72 project. And secondly, they're going to start from Providence and come west, so it's going to be a while until they get to Madison. But we just put a basic placeholder in that, and if we were to look at the next bond issuance that we have of $3 million, and that was just throwing something in there to start with. We're not to a point where we can talk numbers of who would pay for what yet, primarily because obviously the changeover to Madison County leadership will lead to whoever comes in and takes Dale Strong's place will need to get involved and they will start moving forward. So you just want to give you kind of, give you a heads up of something that we may be bringing down the road in participating in. Seven large projects that support our overall community in especially moving traffic to and from the jobs on Redstone and Research Park.
Thank you, Karen. Anybody have any questions at this point? All right, we're going to move on to item number three. And our city attorney is going to walk us through virtual participation by city council members. That means we do a change in last legislative session.
What we have here, we put in binders matters that legal has prepared. First one, if you would, is a tab that says virtual participation by council. We have prepared a ordinance that would basically amend the current city code so that we could allow for attendance by telephone or by video. However, I know with the course of COVID, you know, there were live meetings and basically held exclusively, removed, et cetera. They really clamped down with the newest update that was updated back in July of 2022. And basically, there's two complications now in order to have somebody that can attend a meeting by either video or right home. One, you have to have a physical form here in order to have somebody to attend by video. And second, they only, they provide a member of the council committee participating by electronic meetings, as provided in the section, has to be quote physically present at the meeting due, I'm sorry, unable to be physically present at the meeting due to illness. So we cannot put together a ordinance that will allow you to not attend, phone it in if we have a form and then maybe there's a scheduling disruption or whatever. Unfortunately, it would have to be first with a physical form here and then the person would be able to phone in or video if they were in fact ill. Now, they don't define what illness is, so this seems to be pretty broad. So it's not just letting you the COVID or fever, et cetera. So it seems like it's pretty broad. So what we did was we put together an ordinance that just parrots what the state statute states so that we could basically utilize the full advantage of being able to use that option for the council. And we also included that this could also be done for committee members or if they're committees. So we prepared the ordinance. If there's any questions about this or the ordinance that we put together, we can provide this for a first reading on December 12th if y'all wanted to consider it, moving forward with that.
Okay, councilor, she has some questions.
Yes. Due to illness, is this, do you have to put the doctor's note or do you just, we're going to honor our honor, we are ill?
The statute doesn't provide any sort of guidance as far as what the council will consider or has to require of anyone. So basically, it's just to the discretion of, I guess, the president of the council as far as whether or not they do indeed have those. But no, there's no requirement or doctor's excuse or what the illness is, et cetera. Essentially, as long as council's happy with the explanation that they have an illness, that should suffice.
And if the council member does participate remotely, they can still vote?
They can, yes.
They just can't help make a call?
They can vote and basically they are deemed present as if they, as if they were there for a meeting for all purposes. And the statute specifically states that and we parroted that language again in the ordinance as well. So they can basically, once they attend, there's a physical form here and then we have one member that has to call in. Then basically, they are treated as if they are here for all the purposes included.
And IT is prepared to, if it's a Zoom, IT will be prepared?
Well, that's the other question. Basically, the way the statute is written, it also requires that whoever calls in, it can't just simply be that they call in and maybe just the council can hear. We have to basically set it up so that the audience can hear as well. So that's an express condition of the ordinance, I'm sorry, of the statute and ordinance that we put together. So that is something that does need to be coordinated with IT as far as what is the best way to do it. It may be best just to try to, you know, work through maybe a Zoom, but again, I'm just talking out loud as far as. They may go to requiring Zoom. It seems like we can, you probably coordinate that better, that's just conversation with IT for later as far as what's the best way. But it does have to be in such a manner so that the audience can hear, the back end board, whoever's in here.
If you guys decide to want to move forward, I'll work with IT to, if this was had for free, to make sure we have that part of it covered where it meets the criteria.
I think it's a great idea.
Yeah, especially if somebody had the flu or something, did not want to come to a meeting contagious. One follow-up question to pose to IT, I think we've run into this before when it comes to Zoom. We currently stream our meetings live and I think there was some technical limitation to bringing somebody in by Zoom and then streaming live. I don't know if we've worked out difficulty or can.
Okay, all right.
Is there any time? Do you have to draw it before or?
There's no time limit. I mean, it could be at the very last minute. However, I guess the practical implication would be if somebody calls in five minutes before meeting, hey, I'm sick, I've got a fever. Then how do you set that up so that you can then abide by the statute so that everyone can hear? So that would be a limitation, but there's no time limit as far as how quickly I would have to give that notice to her.
Okay. Everyone willing to have a first reading then? All right, thank you. Okay, the, I think our consultant, was he not available till 6:00 or was he online earlier?
He had been available, certainly, at 3:30, I think that would be 6:00.
Okay, would you like to go ahead and start on the second item that you were going to do with medical marijuana? Or, if you're okay, would you all like to proceed with that and then we'll catch, we'll just take a pause when he's available to address.
Yeah, he's there right now.
Oh, Ben, are you there? Well, or between Margaret.
No, he's not there for a minute.
Okay.
Who didn't we hear, wait, wait, who didn't we hear that? That was you.
All right. It's too late. All right, so the planning department and the legal department were asked to look into medical marijuana a little bit. And you have a graphic in front of you, it's also up on the screen. And so the planning piece of this is related to the land use component. What this graphic represents is the limitations that are set forth in state law. So state law does not allow a medical marijuana dispensary within 1,000 feet from a school or a licensed daycare. So we have a current data set and that's mapped here. And as you can see, most of Madison is within 1,000 feet of a school, you know, where you would have a commercial corridor. The areas that would be available, we'll get that graphic back, thank you. The areas that would be available would be Madison Boulevard for the most part and also most of the Highway 72 area that's within Madison. There are some other roads that do have some availability for that. But when we're looking at the type of land use, the zoning that would be along Madison Boulevard and Highway 72, if council were to go forward with this, we'd make a recommendation that you would only allow them in a B3 zone. Originally, I was considering B2 and B3 because that's where we allow pharmacies. But I think after spending a little bit more time on this, again, if you choose to go forward, we would recommend the B3. B3 is our most intense commercial zoning. Most of Madison Boulevard is zoned B3. There's a good portion of it that is industrial as well, but where we allow pharmacy. But I think after spending a little bit more time on this, again, if you choose to go forward, we would recommend the B3. B3 is our most intense commercial zoning. Most of Madison Boulevard is zoned B3. There's a good portion of it that is industrial as well, but where we allow pharmacy. But I think after spending a little bit more time on this, again, if you choose to go forward, we would recommend the B3. B3 is our most intense commercial zoning. Most of Madison Boulevard is zoned B3. There's a good portion of it that is industrial as well.
Yeah, I want to choose, what is it, you have to tell us something.
So Madison Boulevard is zoned mostly B3 and some industrial. Highway 72 in Madison is almost all B3. So that would be the zoning category that we would recommend. The council could go so far as to say it has to be B3 zoning and only Madison Boulevard and Highway 72. We do have a few areas that have B3 zoning on County Line Road, on the northern portion of County Line Road. But, and they're just outside that 1,000-foot buffer. So if you want it, and I will also say we've been contacted by a number of potential businesses that we're looking to locate and four of them specifically, and all of them want to be on either Madison Boulevard or Highway 72 because that's where the traffic counts are. They have zero interest in locating on Hughes or Sullivan or County Line or Huntsville Brownsbury or anything like that. So I think again, you're, if you proceed, you could go with B3 on Madison Boulevard and Highway 72. And if you want to capture that, you'd be able to do that. So that's from a land use perspective. Happy to answer any questions.
Do you want to let Ryan come and do all the pretty things?
Sure.
Is that okay? Kilgore, the legal aspect.
I prepared a very short overview that's in the packet there that just kind of gives kind of 30,000-foot view as far as what medical marijuana dispensaries statute allows and doesn't allow. Basically, this statute begins back from September 1st of 2022. And it allows each municipality to either allow dispensaries to be in their jurisdiction or not. So it is absolutely a kind of review of the council if they do not want there to be a dispensary or then to not pass an ordinance to allow for dispensaries to be in the city of Madison. Now, if the city does decide that it does want to allow for dispensaries to be in Madison, the code section requires that we would pass an ordinance or a resolution that would allow it before the end of the year, before December 1st. I have put together a draft ordinance that would basically allow for the operation of one of these within the city. But the way this would work is we would basically have an ordinance that allows for it or we don't vote on one and then we just don't allow it. So we don't take no action. So those are the two options for the council. As far as moving forward, as far as deciding where it's going to be and how it's zoned, that would be handled separately through zoning in its separate ordinance. So what we have here and what I prepared is an ordinance just simply to vote on whether or not to actually have and allow them to be here. Basically, the state's made regulation that is very simple for the city. They are going to regulate it from seed to sale. That means that we don't get to, you know, step in and determine who gets the license, who doesn't. There's a lot of strict, we're strict, I'll go into in a minute here, just to let you know as far as what they're requiring of these licenses. But unfortunately, there is very little oversight that a city will have as far as who gets the license other than simply where's it zoned, where can it be located. So this will make the city's decision on this, you know, very limited as far as, you know, how they handle and what they do with it. So the state has preemptively regulated this medical cannabis, so that will tie our hands a bit. Just so that you and your constituents know, as it stands right now, the state is only issuing 37 total licenses for the entire state for this initial application process that they have. So this is not going to be a gold rush immediately. We're going to have a potential for, you know, one on every one kind of thing. Now, four or five years later, who knows what the state's going to actually issue as far as the license and how many more they will. I just want you to understand the scope now, 37 statewide, that's not a lot of dispensaries that we would expect to have anytime soon in the next, next year. Now, one thing, this is heavily regulated. It's 102 pages as far as all the regulations that are there. But basically, just to give you kind of a shorthand as far as what's allowed and what's not going to be allowed by the state. It will allow for cannabis in the form of tablets, tablets, capsules, gels, cubes, oral use. What it does not allow, and actually expressly for pivots, is that marijuana be in the form that it be smoked, baked, covered in sugar, placed in an edible or sold as a raw plant. So whatever dispensary cannot, you know, have edibles, it cannot provide these things. It's very limited as far as how it can be consumed and once you actually have a license. Basically, we have a 12-member commission called Medical Cannabis Commission, and they're going to basically regulate this from application all the way from, like I said, from seed to sale. And these are very, very rigorous requirements that they have. First, they investigate the licensees' criminal records to determine whether or not they can even qualify for this. They require that each one of these facilities have required surveillance so they can actually keep tabs of who's in there. You cannot just simply walk into one of these places. There's all these requirements as to how you can actually get access to the facility. They're required to have extra security measures for whatever cash transactions that happen as a result of it. They require dedicated parking. There's ongoing training, ongoing reporting. So basically, just want to let you know that the commission is going to regulate all of this except for where we place it. But they have, they are going to make it very, they're not handing out like candy, this is the bottom line. So far, as I understand from my research, 239 applications were submitted to the state as of this week. And I think to date, maybe 30 cities have adopted ordinances and six counties that have adopted some sort of resolution for this. I think that Huntsville has recently moved back in October to basically pass theirs and allow for it. I think even Athens, they approved it just a couple of weeks ago. So I've looked at and actually talked with one of my, someone that I know from the city of Birmingham has worked very hard on this, worked with the legal municipalities as far as all that. And we're able to kind of sort out a few things about, about the statute and how this is going to be forwarded. And basically, with our discussions with the legal municipalities, they're of the opinion that we can issue a business license with us and that we can tax it as a sales tax. There's been some, I hate to even mention it in this state, there's been some talk of a great bond that the state is of the opinion that they should be allowed to tax all of it as far as a sales tax. Now, as far as legal opinion from legal municipalities, my legal opinion that they have to do this, we can clearly issue a business license for anybody that is an applicant. In fact, the application process they have to provide to the state says you have to have a business license attached to your application in order to apply. So they clearly allow us to have a business license and that we can tax that. I don't know if this is a fight or if this is just simply, it's so new that maybe the state's, you know, still trying to figure this out as we are. But the city attorneys that I've talked to and the legal municipal attorneys who really, you know, led on this, they're of the opinion that we can absolutely tax the sales tax. So I believe we can proceed under that assumption and nothing's been officially provided by the state. But we just heard some things from the great bond that they may think they have the right to tax it fully and make. There could be some sort of complication or result, I guess I'll probably tell you that there as far as the sales tax. Finally, just want to let you know that the way the statute is set up, there's some qualifying conditions. There's a bit of a laundry list, includes everything from autism, spectrum disorder, cancer-related nausea, vomiting, chronic pain, Crohn's disease, depression, epilepsy. It's a long, long list. I'm going to go here all the way through it. But basically, you have to have those qualifying conditions in order to qualify for the medical marijuana. Now, I know that one of the questions that y'all may have, some constituents may have, well, what happens if someone gets a license in my backyard and I don't like it? Can I not come to my city council and talk to them about, you know, this person, this, fine, you know, medical dispensary one thing, but this particular person getting it, I have problems with this. This can't happen in my backyard. Well, the state is going to have an open process for that, but unfortunately, it's going to go from the state in Montgomery as opposed through this law. Deadline for that is everyone that wants to apply for these licenses, they have to have it by December 31st. On October 13th, they will basically have a process of a couple of months where the state will verify, looking at records, going through, confirming that they met all the procedures, everything they need to do. Then there's going to be a 30-day public comment period from April 13th to approximately mid-May. And it's at that point that if anyone has any concerns over a certain licensee that maybe the city, I'm sorry, that the state has license, but there's any sort of concern over that entity or that person having this license, it would have to be addressed right through Montgomery at that time. And then basically, the first licenses will really, they will be issued to the lot of 2023, there's first 37 licenses. So I just want to let you all know, just kind of the overview as far as what the state's going to be, what's within their purview, very limited amount. We have as far as how we can regulate it. And finally, if there's any sort of need or request to talk through some of these issued licenses, that would have to go through the state. So as it stands, we provide an ordinance that we would, I would suggest that we put for a first reading on December 12th. It would be a short week, so from the 19th, we could probably provide at that point, ask for a vote on it. And then we would have to provide this to the commission in order to perfect our ability in order to allow the dispensary. But like I said, if we take no action, that is also allowed as well if council so decides.
So when you said from seed to sale that the state is regulating, does that also include rescinding a license? If we were to see some activity that we didn't like and we, other business licenses, the city has a little more power to revoke or rescind the license?
I think, what I can see as far as the regulation, if any information that we received showed that it should be revoked, unfortunately, we don't have the authority to do it, but I think that we would easily be able to send that to the commission and notify them so that they can make the decision. They remain the decision maker, but we are actually open to public comment. So there is a provision therefore actually rescinding a license because they're doing side inspections, surprise inspections to make sure that this is not devolved into something that has not been so carefully crafted and regulated as far as a dispenser.
So I'm trying to picture the procedure. I meet with my physician. I have a debilitating illness. He believes that this would be the best course of treatment for me. Does he then write a prescription for this with what he recommends the dosage be and the form be? And then I take it to this dispensary? Is that how it works?
It is, and I will tell you, I'm not as well versed as far as the procedure that it takes from, from, from prescription to dispensary. But that is essentially, there has to be some sort of diagnosis and there has to be some sort of prescription for it by a licensed physician in order to even get to that point.
When we talk, I don't mean interrupt you, but when we've talked to the folks who have come to see us about the possibility of this, they aren't even allowed in the store if they don't have a prescription, just to let you know. So you can't even just, you can't just wander in at a liquor store and just look around. It is literally, you have to have a prescription.
And you can't just walk in. Basically, you have to have a prescription, then you have to have basically appointment and then basically like a secure door, video system, requires a video system so that everybody can, you know, they have to detail each person in there. So if there was in fact someone who catalyzes, maybe they, you know, jump around the hoops and then all of a sudden, once they have the scum, and say, eh, well, you know what, you know, just whoever was coming or whatever. There's side inspections, there's surprise inspections, there's video surveillance, there's logs that they have to turn over as I understand. So it's, if anything goes awry, I think the way that the regulations are set, they would get caught very quickly.
Okay, and prescriptions are not taxed right now. When I get my high blood pressure medication, that's not taxed. Is there going to need to be some sort of law through Montgomery that this would be able to even be taxed?
Well, the way that it's set up now, Montgomery has actually set up what they call a privilege tax on the, on the actual initial dispensment. So that tax has already been handed through Montgomery as far as how they're going to collect it. We, the city, should be able to recover sales tax on it just like we would, you know, anything else. So there's nothing else special that I see that we need to do. So there's nothing else special that I see that we need to do that other than from the business license standpoint, we obviously need to make sure we have a business license, uh, for them to apply under. As far as the sales tax, it shouldn't be any different than, than anything else that we prescribe.
And will the dispensaries say we're able to get to one-on-seventy-two, one-on-twenty, they maybe want to get into a price war? Are they going to be able to advertise their product? Is, is that an advertizable?
That is a good question. I don't have an immediate answer for you on that. I'm sure that it may very well be covered in the regulations, but I'd be happy to take a look at it and get back to you. But I will tell you this, there's also very strict regulations about how closely the dispensaries can be located to each other. And we consider thirty-seven for the whole state, at least in the short term. We, we wouldn't envision that we would have, you know, multiple locations.
Right. And I would guess they, we can't, they can't advertise liquor sales, like, as far as I'm pretty sure, like, Wendell can't have an advertisement in the paper. I've never seen that like I did in Florida when I lived there. The only other request I would have would be, I would love to hear what you can be with, on this subject.
Right. And we'll, we'll continue with this portion in a moment, but I'm sorry to see, we're just after six P M. And is our consultant online? Okay, thank you, Mr. O'Callaghan. I'm sure we're gonna have some other follow-up questions for you. And thank you, counsel, for letting us get started on this and hold your questions. And we're going to, um, move back to item number four, which is a residential impact study. And, um, Anna, are you on the line? I'm sure we're gonna have another follow-up question for you and. Oh, we have the feedback again. Okay. Are we clear now? Okay. So, um, Mick, did you want to introduce anything before he starts? And I'm hoping he can hear us. Ben, can you hear us?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Um, yes. Uh, so staff was asked to have, uh, the impact fee study updated to, um, look at just impact fees for residential use. Many of you may recall, the city had a, an impact fee study done. Um, it was completed over twenty nineteen and was, um, finished, right, um, as COVID was setting in twenty twenty. And the council decided, given that in particular, that it was really timely to, um, look at increasing the cost of doing business in Madison, given what businesses we're going to be experiencing. Um, so fast forward to earlier this year, and, um, again, we were asked to have the council do an update looking at residential only. Tishler Weiss is the consultant that did the study back in twenty nineteen, nineteen, twenty nineteen, twenty twenty. So, um, Ben Griffin is the analyst, uh, who's on the line and is going to walk us through a PowerPoint, um, going over that, and then we'll be able to answer questions.
Thank you. Anna, welcome to our work session, and thank you for preparing, um, your slides. I'm gonna go ahead and let you get started since very, very nice introduction.
All right, thank you. Again, my name is Ben Griffin, Tishler Weiss. Uh, I did work on, uh, this study a couple of years ago, uh, and so, you know, I'm very familiar with, uh, you know, the goals of this study. Uh, can everyone see the presentation I'm sharing?
Yes.
All right, perfect. We'll, uh, we'll jump right in. Uh, you know, Tishler Weiss has done, you know, a lot of these impact fee studies and physical analyses, uh, you know, across the country and, uh, you know, especially in Alabama. We're actually working with the city of Pike Road currently, uh, getting, uh, new fees enacted for them. So I figured I would start with, you know, sort of an impact fee refresher for anyone who was on the council last time, but maybe can't remember, you know, all the ins and outs. And for anyone who's new, um, you know, bring them up to speed. So, um, if impact fees are, you know, a one-time payment for growth-related infrastructure, uh, so essentially you're having the growth paying for, um, you know, their fair share of capital expenditures, uh, in this case related to Blackberry Parks. Um, you know, as they, as that, you know, residential development occurs. Um, we cannot use impact fees for operations, maintenance, replacement. It needs to be new infrastructure, adding new capacity or expanding capacity at an existing site. Uh, it's not a tax, um, more like a contractual arrangement to build this growth-related infrastructure. So there are three things that we have to prove with an impact fee, uh, and that relates to need, proportionality, and benefit. Um, so, you know, we, we have these impact fees to meet, you know, growth-related infrastructure needs. Uh, so we want to make sure that, you know, as growth occurs, we're providing the infrastructure needed to start with that. And then, you know, we want to make sure that, you know, we're not adding, you know, system-level improvements, or, you know, we're adding these bigger projects that, uh, provide, you know, a benefit to, you know, a larger area than, um, you know, than, you know, something that would really require, um, you know, because of a one-specific project. So for example, you know, if, if you have a local requirement to, you know, add a playground at, you know, at new residential development, that wouldn't be considered, you know, a project-level improvement that needs to level. So that's not the type of improvement that we include in the impact study. Next, we have to make sure that, you know, we, that the fees represent a new development proportion share of those type of costs. Uh, so with these residential fees, we look at occupancy. Uh, so we know that in Madison, single-family units have more occupants than a multifamily unit. So those single-family units should pay more, um, you know, for their fair share of these improvements. And finally, we, we want to make sure that the fee payer receives a benefit, and this is sort of twofold. Uh, first, we want to make sure that the fee payer is geographically close enough to receive a benefit. Um, this is not as much of an issue in Madison as it would be, you know, maybe Phoenix or L A, you know, a larger sprawling city where we might need service units. And then the other part of that benefit is, you know, if, if someone pays you this impact fee, then you receive the infrastructure related to it. So once you take the money, you do need to actually build, um, those improvements or buy that land, uh, whatever you need. So any questions so far?
We're good. Keep going.
Okay. Uh, next up, we have the methodologies. Uh, so these really look at points in time, so past, present, future. So the past will be a cost recovery. So if you had oversized some sort of infrastructure, um, you can have, you can buy into that excess capacity. Uh, the present is, you know, incremental expansion. So that's looking at, you know, your existing level of service. So how many acres of parkland do you have at first? Uh, you know, how many square feet of library facilities do you have at first? And then just maintain that as you go forward. And essentially what we do is say, okay, well, this is our level of service, and this is what it costs to acquire an acre of land, you know, to build a square foot of library facilities. Uh, you apply that cost to that level of service. Uh, and then the final, uh, looking at the future, so a plan-based approach. Uh, generally, we use this, then, you know, you have an adopted, you know, master plan or C I P that says, you know, we want, you know, X, Y, and Z improvements. Um, and so we can use those, you know, more refined costs to say, okay, well, this is the growth-related cost of that, and this is existing development share of that. So any questions with methodologies?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, so we also need to look at, you know, credits. Uh, so there are, you know, three types of credits. They're site-specific. Uh, so this is actually handled, um, after you implement these. Uh, so we have, um, multiple parks. So if a developer, um, dedicates, let's say, ten acres of land, um, you know, adjacent to the development, um, for park use, you could provide a credit, um, to the impact fee for that because we are including property rent in the impact fee. So essentially, what, what this is saying is if, uh, if, if a developer constructs or acquires, uh, anything that you're going to charge for any impact fee, then you would need to provide a, a credit for that. Uh, that is debt service. So if there was any, you know, debt service related to, uh, you know, parks or libraries, then you'd need to, you know, provide a credit for that. And then the final would be any sort of dedicated revenue. So if you had, you know, a dedicated, you know, property tax or a local option sales tax, um, to acquire parkland or, um, you know, to buy library materials, that dedicated portion would need to include it as a credit in the impact fee. So any questions related to credits?
I've got a question on that. So on the site, site-specific portion of it, who consta- who, who gives the value of whatever the developers, I guess, donate, if you will?
Great question.
How's that price move? You know, how do you give that price?
So in, in this case, it would need to be, you know, if, if, uh, let's say they had, you know, a hundred homes in the development, and let's say that came out to, you know, the requirement of five acres of parkland. If they dedicated that to you, then they would just receive, uh, a credit for those five acres. So whatever, you know, the, the value that we're using in the study, um, you know, that's the credit that they're gonna get. So it would just be, you know, five acres times, you know, the cost per step. So if, you know, if, if it comes in, if their land costs more, you know, you can only credit them up to the amount of, you know, that component of this fee.
So it's based on the sale of properties, right?
There's even an app that kind of developers would, they could do an appraisal if, if they're wanting to get credit for their home.
So, Mr. O'Callaghan, I guess my question is, is do we evaluate that five acres and say it's worth X, or does the developer say it's worth X?
Um, in my experience, the, the developer is going to say it's worth X. And the, if what the developer is, um, dedicating, where it gets interesting, I guess, is if the developer is dedicating a larger amount of land for whatever reason, then maybe the fee would require, um, which, you know, they normally aren't going to want to do, but let's say we're in that scenario. Um, but typically, the, um, the developers, you know, may say, hey, I had to pay two hundred and fifty thousand dollars an acre for land, and I should be getting credit for if I'm dedicating five acres. The best point is that, you know, if you do the math and they have to, um, dedicate or pay X amount, and they dedicate that amount of land, then it's clean, right? But if they're wanting to pay just a fee and not dedicate land, right, which is fees, um, they're gonna try and get that fee based on what the appraisal was.
Any other questions for Ben on this topic? Okay, Ben, we're good.
All right. Uh, all right, so we'll start with the development projections. Uh, so what we see here is, uh, a ten-year projection. Uh, so this is in part, um, from the market economic assessment that we performed as part of the Madison Non-Track twenty forty-five. Uh, so for single-family units, we're using just the, the low-end projections related to that. So the assumption is there would be four thousand additional housing units over the next ten years. With multifamily units, um, we looked at the projects, uh, the projections are based on, uh, units in the development pipeline, um, over this past summer. Uh, so essentially what it's saying is, you know, just shy of six thousand additional housing units. And when you convert that into population, that'd be about thirteen thousand additional rest related to those housing units. So any questions related to that?
I think you're good.
Okay. All right, so we'll start with library. Uh, so we'll have a citywide service area, and we're looking at two components. So there's a facilities component and then a materials component. Um, both are using the incremental expansion methodology, uh, so essentially just maintaining that level of service. Uh, so we'll start with the library facilities. Uh, so you can see that you have twenty-five thousand square feet today and a twenty, uh, twenty-two population of about sixty thousand people. Uh, so that comes out to about point four-one-four square feet per person. And assuming four hundred dollars per square foot, you should charge a hundred and sixty-five dollars and sixty-nine cents, uh, for a library facilities to each person. Uh, so what you see on the right side is just saying, hey, if we then were gonna grow by thirteen thousand people over the next ten years, then we're gonna go from twenty-five thousand square feet of library facilities, um, to just over thirty thousand. So the growth-related share of that, uh, is about fifty-four hundred square feet. Uh, one really nice thing about the minimal methodology is if you grow faster than you project, you generate more revenue, you can build more. Uh, if you don't grow as quickly as you project, then you generate less revenue and you have to build less. Uh, so it really isolates the general fund from changes in, in market conditions. Uh, because, you know, you don't really want to say, hey, we think we're gonna have, you know, two million dollars to go towards a library expansion. And then, you know, you, you miss those growth projections, uh, but you're on the hook for that. With this, you know, whatever's in the account, you spend that, um, towards that expansion. Uh, it's not saying you have to build this many square feet, uh, at this site. It just gives you that flexibility to say, okay, well, you know, maybe you want to expand our current facility, maybe you want to build, you know, a satellite facility. Uh, it's not locking you into any one specific project. It's just saying, you know, if you grow where we're respecting, then, you know, you would generate about two million dollars, uh, for additional libraries. So any questions related to that?
Ben, yes, I have a question. Um, I know that some of our senior living facilities around have rooms where the library council provides books for them. Would that be considered part of the, um, basically in-kind? As, you know, so many square feet is, we have provided a library facility, therefore, we don't have to pay the impact fee. I mean, how would that work?
Um, good question. So I mean, it really needs to be related to actual, you know, square footage. Uh, so, you know, if anyone wants a, a credit for that component of the fee, then you can be providing, uh, you know, additional capacity, you know, with the permit.
Okay, Mr. O'Callaghan. I'm understanding, you're saying an existing project that's serving seniors or if it's a new project?
Well, one that would be impacted by the impact fees. Like, I guess it would have to be a new senior living facility.
So.
But they have like a two-hundred square foot library. Let's just pick a number, okay? And they said, okay, we don't want to have to pay the impact fees because we've done that library there, so we shouldn't have to pay the library portion.
No, because it's not a public facility.
Perfect. That's what I'm going to continue. Thank you.
Thanks, very much. And that's, that's something I want to reiterate, you know, any of these, uh, capital components, uh, they need to be, you know, provided for public benefit. Uh, so, you know, when we talked about parks earlier, uh, you know, if, if a developer came in and added, you know, a five-acre park in their development, but it wasn't open to the public, that would not be able to be sort of impacted credit. Right? Move on to collection materials. Uh, so this, similar to the facilities, we're just looking at what you have today. So just shy of ninety thousand, um, you know, collection materials. Um, the, the library provided the, the cost per unit, uh, for these different types of, uh, materials. And so essentially, what it's saying is, you know, based on the existing inventory, uh, the average unit cost for library materials is twenty-six dollars. Uh, so if we maintain that, uh, you know, over the next ten years, uh, we would need, we'd go from, you know, just shy of ninety thousand units today uh, to just over a hundred and nine thousand units, uh, ten years from now. So the fees would pay for, you know, almost nineteen thousand five hundred additional, uh, collection materials. And at twenty-six dollars a piece, that's, uh, about a half million dollars.
Ben, I've got a follow-up question on the materials. Um, where, 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 where did you get the information in terms of what currently we're providing for the residents that we have to make up this chart?
This was provided, uh, by the, uh, the library.
Madison Library, see at the bottom left there, Source Madison Public Library at the bottom.
Yeah. When, how, how recent were you getting this information?
Um, back in, I guess it was the spring.
Okay. And so when I see book digital one improvement, what does that tell me? What is that representing?
You know, I'm not actually sure. I'll have to ask someone who's been in the library.
Okay. I know that, um, digital services have really exploded during COVID, and so I just wanted to make sure we were. and so I just wanted to make sure we were accurately capturing that growth rate. Um, and I wasn't sure where I would be seeing it on this list, so I was looking at book digital, and I don't know why something is a one.
I wonder if it's because it's Hoopla, and it's the one service of Hoopla, which is their basic digital service right now, because Libby is gone and Overview is gone. So it could be that it's just Hoopla.
Okay. And if it is just Hoopla, one of the things that I recently became aware of, because I'm on the library board, is they've expanded their digital services. So I'm just wondering if even, I think since May. And so we just had a briefing on this, so I'm wondering how hard would it be to update this particular slide with just the most recent, um, digital upgrades and services that are being provided currently by the library?
Well, Hoopla has thousands.
Well, we, we did it back in May, but we were asked to update it just recently for the parks for, um, for Hexagon and, and, um, uh, and most chapel property, um, didn't get in the timing. We didn't go out and reach out to the library to update it. We weren't asked to do that, but it could be done, sir.
I, I just found out about it myself, so I just, I'm looking at this chart and just wondering if that could be done pretty easily.
Yeah, I have a question. Um, twenty-six dollars a unit, okay? That, you're using that same twenty-six dollars ten years from now. Ten years from now, twenty-six dollars isn't gonna buy you the same thing. What kind of escalation factor have you added for the unit cost? Or have you added an escalation factor for the unit cost?
Uh, we have not, and the reason we generally don't add, um, an escalator is because, you know, if you get too far ahead of the actual cost, uh, then, you know, someone, a fee payer could, you know, ask for a credit back. Uh, so it's, you know, we suggest, you know, updating every three to five years. Uh, and that way, uh, you know, you're, you're not really looking at a cost ten years out, you're really looking at costs, you know, every three to five years. Uh, so they, you know, in theory, wouldn't get too far off. And we could, we could include, you know, I would say a conservative escalation, you know, to these existing numbers, but, you know, I wouldn't wanna get, you know, too aggressive with that again, because if we end up too far off, uh, then, you know, a fee payer will be able to come back and say, hey, we do want the credit, uh, because you actually overestimate the costs.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, go ahead, Ben.
All right. So this just shows those per person values. Um, and we also included, you know, the cost of the impact fee studies. So development over the next five years, um, would pay the city back for the cost of the study. Uh, but essentially what we're doing here is just saying, hey, if it's two hundred and five dollars and ninety-six cents per person, we multiply that by, uh, the average occupancy of different types of units, so a single-family or multifamily unit, uh, to come up with that proposed fee. So for a single-family fee, it's two hundred and five dollars and ninety-six cents times, uh, two-point-six persons per housing unit. Uh, so the proposed fee would be five point one hundred and five dollars for a library. Any questions related to libraries? We'll move on to parks.
Go ahead.
All right. So, uh, we will have a citywide service area for parks and recreation. Uh, we're looking at five components, all use the incremental methodology. Uh, and so we're looking at parkland, uh, the actual improvements on, you know, at those parks, trails, greenways, and recreation facilities. Uh, so currently, uh, you provide three hundred, about twenty, about three hundred and twenty-three acres, uh, parkland, and, uh, based on recent acquisition costs, uh, we're using seventy-five thousand per acre. Uh, and so, you know, currently, you're providing about point zero-zero-five-four acres, uh, per person, or about five and a half acres per thousand persons. Uh, and at seventy-five thousand per acre, you should charge about four hundred and one dollars and sixty-two cents, uh, per person. So, based on ten years of effective growth, uh, you would need approximately seventy additional acres of planned at a cost of about five point three million. Three questions related to park land.
No.
Okay. Uh, next up, we have park improvements. Uh, so on the left side of the screen, you see the existing park improvements. Uh, you have fifty-seven today, um, and the total cost for those improvements is about twenty-eight million dollars. So the weighted average cost is about four hundred and one hundred and five thousand dollars. Oh, I did wanna point out, uh, you know, I have this, uh, it is, you know, footnote for baseball fields, freshman soccer field, and tennis court. Those do include some improvements at the Hexagon, uh, property. You know, as long as you have finished the acquisition of, uh, that site before you adopt the fees, then there's no issue. But if it looks like you're not going to acquire that site before we adopt the fees, um, we would need to make adjustments, uh, to remove that, uh, because this is saying, you know, this is your existing inventory, you wanna maintain your existing level of service. Uh, so I did wanna point that out. You are including the land at Hexagon in the previous comments. Uh, so I just did wanna make sure everyone understood that, you know, we're showing that right now, but, uh, we do need to make sure that the acquisition is finished before we adopt the fees.
Thank you.
Uh, so if you wanna maintain existing level of service, this is saying that you'd need, you know, how much wealth additional improvements over the next ten years, uh, and that would be about six point one million dollars in fee revenue.
You have a follow-up, Tim?
So, if you not only give an improvement of the property, you're not the first to have a problem?
This, this component, the, uh, sorry, the park land component is used to acquire additional land, and then the park improvements component is, uh, meant to add improvements to that land.
Okay.
Right. Uh, next up, we have trails. So currently, you have eight miles of trails. Uh, and based on a recent, uh, trail cost, uh, it's about a hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars per mile. Uh, so you currently provide, uh, point zero-zero-zero-one miles of trail per person. Uh, and maintaining that level of service, you'd need to add, uh, in about one point seven additional miles over the next ten years. So that would be about two hundred and thirty thousand dollars, uh, in fees related to, uh, you know, trail destruction. All right, next up, we have greenways. Uh, so you know about two point four today. Um, and at a cost of seventy-five thousand dollars to acquire an acre of land, um, you would need to acquire about five and a half, uh, additional acres of land over the next ten years. And fees would generate, you know, just shy of four hundred thousand dollars for acquisition of these greenways. All right, and then recreating facilities. Uh, you have just shy of thirty thousand square feet today. And assuming a cost of four hundred dollars per square foot, um, it's just shy of two hundred dollars per person. So if you maintain your existing level of service, you'd need about six to four hundred additional, uh, square feet of recreation facilities over the next ten years. And that would generate about two and a half million dollars in fee revenue. Uh, so the proposed parks and recreation fees, um, about eleven hundred dollars per person. So again, multiply that cost per person times about, if you rate, um, as a single-family unit, would generate a proposed fee of two thousand eight hundred and ninety-seven dollars. So any questions related to the parks and recreation fees?
No, thank you.
Okay. All right, next up, uh, this is the fee summary. So, uh, the, the total proposed fees for single-family would be three thousand four hundred and thirty-two dollars, and for multifamily would be two thousand one hundred and ninety-one dollars. Uh, again, you know, I mentioned earlier that single-family units have more occupancy per unit, so they should pay more since we're assessing per person. Uh, you can see that, you know, proportionately, uh, single-family is paying more than multifamily. Uh, and then I just wanted to provide a comparison for single-family units, uh, just to other communities in the southeast. Um, this, you know, isn't quite an apples-to-apples comparison because, you know, a park fee, you know, and Madison may have five components that, you know, we discussed tonight. Um, but, you know, maybe, you know, in, you know, the Nashville area, um, those park fees maybe don't have to be. Uh, so, you know, it's hard to provide a direct comparison, but we did want to provide, uh, you know, just a, a general comparison so you can see, you know, this thirty-four hundred dollar, you know, proposed fee for single-family units, you know, how it compares to other cities in the southeast. And that is my final slides. So if you have any questions or comments, uh, I'm curious.
I have a question. How did you put together this list of cities?
Uh, so some of them we have worked with. Some of them, um, you know, just found it, uh, in their, their fee schedules on the internet. Uh, but, you know, this does represent, you know, a single-family detached home. Uh, and, you know, some of them go by size of unit. Uh, so, you know, it's just, if they do it by size of unit, uh, we just assume like a two-thousand-square-foot unit. Uh, but, yeah, this is just a, you know, pretty general, you know, comparison to single-family impact fees in the southeast.
How many cities within Alabama have impact fees?
Uh, so currently, um, mostly they're gonna be in, uh, Walton County. So, uh, Orange Beach, Fairhope, uh, Foley, um, maybe Gettys.
So basically, you listed Alabama one?
Correct. Yeah, I think this has everyone. The city of Pike Road, I'm working with them right now. Um, but, you know, they, they will be due fees. They haven't gone to, uh, any sort of, you know, public meeting, so I can't show them here. Uh, but, yeah, the city of Pike Road is working on, uh, you know, inaction fees right now.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Ben?
Uh, Ben, I've got one question on your fee comparison chart that you have up. So, the, if we followed your methodology, uh, on incremental, we're, we're fairly low, but part of that is because we're only looking at residential impact fees. Before, when you did this study, you were looking at other infrastructure projects and also incorporating commercial.
Exactly. So when you, and you can see in this, you know, this street, uh, column, that's where you really start seeing the big fees because it's expensive to build streets. Uh, so, you know, if we were looking, uh, to have a street fee, we would need to assess it to non-residential development, which, you know, given, you know, the climate, um, that may not be, you know, politically acceptable, but, uh, your fees would definitely be higher if we, you know, included a, a street fee.
So you just need to look at the parks column to compare, not look at the last column. Right.
So, how do you account for, at least to me, the fundamental assumption in all of this is that the folks in the city, or at least the folks in the, you know, planning to be in the growth of the city, um, are the ones utilizing the improvements. They're utilizing the parks, they're utilizing the library, um, not people from out of town that are, are adding to that. You know, I mean, we, we have baseball tournaments here where a lot of people come in and, and utilize the facilities and could also have a reason to need to expand things. You would want to have a point where maybe some people come here to go to the library. So how, how do you, I mean, is that, is that something to account for? Or is that, I mean, how, how does that get thrown into the mix? Or does it?
Um, it's a good question. It's something we hear a lot, um, especially in the southeast related to, you know, like baseball tournaments, or soccer tournaments, or softball tournaments. Um, where, you know, in some cities like Foley, for example, uh, you know, they have a big sports complex right behind the hour malls. And, you know, when we were working on their fees, we excluded those components because we said, no, that's, you know, it's not really meant for residents. This is meant for, you know, sports tourism. Uh, and so, you know, it doesn't matter if you're growing or not, you know, you would still want that for your sports tourism. So anything that, you know, we can identify as, you know, not being specifically for, you know, your, your residents, uh, you know, we would need to exclude. So, I mean, with the parks, um, you know, we could have, you know, a, a more detailed discussion on that. But unless you have a facility that you built specifically for sports tourism, and, you know, it's really not open in public because you're, you know, booking it, you know, every single weekend with tournaments, you know, you, then that would be an issue.
Yeah, I guess, I guess what my concern is, is, you know, looking at charging the fee here to expand the parks, and at some point, right, I mean, a space that tournaments, whether it's soccer, basketballs, football, baseball, whatever, um, done the right way, those can be money makers. Um, and they're going to put wear and tear on this, and charging, you know, three thousand bucks, uh, a single-family home or whatever that was, is, I, I don't know, from a marketing rep standpoint, that's a drop in the bucket compared to the wear and tear that's gonna put on the facility and the cost for that. So, I mean, I guess I'm just.
Yeah, good point.
That would still be open to the public.
Right, but I think that's, there's a difference between an impact fee and a user fee. So what you're kind of addressing, perhaps, in part, is something that can be captured by a user fee. So if the city is charging a fee to use a facility, then that fee should be covering, it can cover O and M, right, operations and maintenance costs. Um, some cities might not wanna charge a user fee because you want the tournaments to come in and you want the, you know, the people who are going to the tournaments to cater and host hotels and restaurants. And so the fee, fee may be seen as a disincentive, so you have to strike that bound. So the impact fee would, you know, cover the capital piece, that the wear and tear, that maintenance spend indicated, you can't use impact fees to maintain pay for maintenance. So that's where you have to look at a user fee to address what your concern is.
What part of that would be tariffed, like, within the, um, like you said, the restaurant sales tax and the lodging taxes that we're getting?
Sure, there's general, I mean, you're, you have a general fund, right?
There is a revenue generated from that, yeah.
Right, so those sales tax funds go into your general fund and you decide to, you know, maintain your facilities.
Ben, I've got one follow-up question. When, when you set up this study, you're focused on incremental expansion approach. And you're giving us charts on what we would do to expand our services for the incoming growth of residents. Now, there's a plan-based approach for future projects. And you had mentioned in your slide presentation that usually that happens after you adopt a CIP or a master plan, and we're undergoing a comprehensive planning process right now. So just let me give you this hypothetical and have you answer how this would work. But let's say in the comprehensive plan, um, one of the recommendations is we need a new aquatics facility. If we passed a comprehensive plan that had a new aquatics facility, would you then also contemplate, or could you contemplate, looking at, can you have impact fees that do both? Help you pay for future growth and as well as the incremental approach, or do you have to pick one or the other?
If we're talking just facilities, so let's say wreck facilities and let's say that we decide we want to acquire it. So we, we could change that, uh, that parks, uh, and recreation facilities component to a plan-based approach and say, hey, look, we as a community want to have, you know, this aquatic facility. So we're going to spread the costs over, you know, all development. So we'll be able to say, well, this share is, you know, growth-related for the next ten, fifteen, twenty years. Uh, and then there's another share that is existing development share. It's gonna be funded through, you know, other, you know, non-impacty revenues. And so, you know, we, we could definitely do that, you know, if it's the desire of the council to, you know, look at, you know, take, you know, another look at the recreation facilities component. component, we could definitely do that.
Okay. So you could go forward with this incremental approach and then later adjust if, if there is a need to do that?
I would suggest, you know, if it's, if it's likely that you're going to, you know, adopt this comprehensive plan that has aquatic facility, I would say let's, you know, update the study to reflect that. I mean, the benefit of having the incremental methodology is that it doesn't tie you to any specific project. So, you know, we have a recreation facilities component in there, but, you know, it's saying, I think, what, five or 6,000 square feet of facilities. So, you know, you could expand an existing facility and use that money towards the aquatic facility. You know, it gives you a lot of flexibility. If you, if you know that you're going to build that aquatic center, you know, I would say let's have more conversations and let's see what, you know, what it would look like with a plan-based component instead of, you know, the incremental. Now, the flip side of that is that, you know, plan-based, you're saying, this is what we want, this is the cost associated with it. So if the development projections are off, so, you know, we're saying, you know, well, close to 6,000 additional homes over 10 years, let's say the interest rates stay high and, you know, you don't make those projections. Well, you already collected money to build that aquatic center, so you either have to refund that, that share of the impact fee or you have to come up with money from the general fund or somewhere else to, you know, backfill that delta that's left because you didn't, you know, meet the current projections.
Okay. And that was a complete hypothetical question. I haven't even seen the comprehensive plan results yet, so I'm just asking.
Exactly. Yeah. But, you know, it's a good example because you are using incremental for everything. And the reason we're doing that is because, you know, it seems as though you may not, you know, adopt that before the impact fees or, you know, maybe we'll maybe we won't. But, you know, the incremental methodology does give you that ultimate flexibility in saying, okay, well, yeah, we, we have these fees, they're all in the mill, the comp plan says this. So, yeah, we should use the impact fees towards this project or that project. But it's not tying you to any specific.
Yeah. I think, Mary Beth, we've heard that it would be summer before we'd even see the comprehensive plan or proposal. Yeah. So we're a ways off for that. Any other questions, council?
I have some questions. So where did the, I guess, 400 units per year kind of come, come in for a single family, then 159 per year for the multi? Is that, is that a number that we gave you or is that a number that you came up with?
So it's part of the market analysis. So the 4,000 units...
Hey, Ben, hold on just a second.
And one more second. Is that the growth numbers today?
Yes. This is a question. I basically looked at the, it was 4,000 units and it's, it's kind of spread over. I would expect to see it go like this.
Great. Uh-huh. Thank you. Well, Ben, go ahead and respond and then I'll, I'll add on as needed.
Yeah. So, I mean, the single-family gets, you know, from the market assessment, you know, one nice thing about the incremental methodology is that, again, it's, you know, it doesn't, you know, it's not affected by changes in the market. So, you know, those 4,000 units, they could all come in the next, you know, three or four years and then maybe you don't build anything, you know, for the rest of his tenure. And it doesn't change any of the fees. Also, you know, you can grow way more than this because, you know, we're using the low-end projections. Again, it's not going to change the fees. We generate more fee revenue, we can provide more than 4,000 units. And so you would just build more construction, you know, those capital sums.
So, and to add on to what Ben was saying, they just assumed a uniform growth rate over that period. And you're right, you know, growth is going to happen in chunks, especially if you've got some larger projects going forward. And right now, and, and, you know, well, when you're doing projections, right, you're always chasing a number, especially with all the development that's been going on in the metro area and in Madison specifically. So we have that total number of units already approved, right? And a lot of them are under construction already. So that number will be easily met within that timeframe.
So probably, were you involved in giving, in giving him a number? I mean, is this a number? How accurate is that number is what I'm asking?
The consultants developed the numbers when, so Tishler Vice, as part of our comprehensive plan, were retained to do a market assessment. And as it indicates in there, these projections came from the market assessment. And that was based upon what they observed in the market. You know, we provided them information as to what was approved at the time. And that is what they projected would occur over that timeframe. I've, we've had conversations, you know, I've had conversations with Tishler Vice that the multifamily number is too low and that, in particular, and that the single-family number, you know, we're going to exceed that probably be earlier than this timeframe. So, but I think Ben's point is, is that regardless of that number, right, you collect revenue faster or slower. I think the, one of the important considerations for you as you're contemplating this is for you to decide if you want to look at fees. Are you going to apply the fees to already-approved projects that don't have their building permits pulled yet? So, impact fees are collected at the building permit issuance stage. So we have, you know, about 5,000 units or so that have been approved and were under construction. About 2,800 of them have not pulled permits yet. So the projections for the revenue that's calculated here is interesting information. It's accurate information if you assume all those developing units go forward and you collect fees on all of those units. That 10 years' worth of growth, we've already pulled, you know, permits have already been on over half of that. So if you were to decide to collect impact fees on projects that are already approved, right, you could achieve about $7 million. Most communities, and it's good to have Ben laying this, most communities don't assess an impact fee on an already-approved project. But you would have that action when you, if you went forward with an ordinance and you adopt the implementation piece of the ordinance, to say, we're not going to grandfather any project. If you haven't pulled a building permit, you're going to pay the fee. If you take that approach based upon the projects that are approved already, right, that haven't pulled a building permit, which represent that amount of growth, basically, you could get about half of the fees that Tishler Vice is proposing. You'd get about $7 million. Again, you have to apply that fee to everything that's already approved. If you want to collect 14 million, right, that's top in there, then, you know, you're looking at approving probably another 6,000 units to be able to get to those numbers. If, if you choose to not apply the fee to projects that are already approved, right? If you say, look at your form, you made certain assumptions, we're not going to apply the fee to an approved project. In order to achieve the $14 million projected, we'd be looking at the next 10 years or so. And you'd be looking at approving another 6,000 units, a little bit more than that actually for development in the city. Was that, are you following that bouncing ball there?
So basically, just so I can understand, some old slug. So, yeah, I've got my shoes on and I can't use shoes because I get a shoe problem. So this, this projection is if we retroactively go back and get what we've already made agreements with?
The fee projection is. That the housing unit projects, those housing units effectively have already been approved and have already under construction. But the fee projection would be if you went, you'd get half of that fee projection if you applied it to projects that are already approved that hasn't pulled their building permits yet.
And then the others have to come in behind that, the other 6,000.
Yes.
So we have...
If you want to get to 14 million, again, as Ben pointed out, you know, you may only get 2 million, you may only get 5 million, you may only approve 3,000 more units, you get the commensurate amount.
Sure. But, so I guess the, the other point here is the reason we did a tenure projection because you have to spend that money as you collect within a tenure period. How long is that for?
Well, I think, and Ben can chime in here, they typically only are going to look at about 10 years to get a reasonable growth projection because there's so much volatility in the market that, you know, we are looking out to 2045 as part of our comprehensive plan and we've got a, a long-term, effectively build-out scenario, you know, for that. But Tishler Vice was doing a market assessment, didn't really want to look down at 10 years for, for their purposes.
Yeah, that's correct. And, you know, in Alabama, there is no specific enabling legislation for impact fees. So, you know, in other states, so Arizona, for example, it very clearly states that you have 10 years from collection of the fee to spend it. Because you don't have that requirement in Alabama, you know, we say generally, you know, you should, you should spend the money as quickly as possible. But, you know, that fine 10-year range is, you know, where the courts generally settle in, you know, on providing reasonable benefit from, you know, that fee payment.
Right. So if you had a development that paid a fee, right, and they've got residents, you know, they'd like to see the park facility or the, you know, whatever, within a reasonable timeframe so that they can, you know, they paid for it, they'd like that service, basically.
So specifically, why is that question? If, if we're doing incrementally, that, that makes sense. Basically, we do like the project, the other direction gets spent immediately as opposed to like this would be safer.
Well, there has to be enough money to do the project. So taking the aquatics facility, for example, I don't know how much that, how much is the aquatic facility cost?
8 million.
8 million. All right. So $8 million, right? And they could do an analysis to say, this is existing development's fair share of the aquatics facility because all your existing residents are going to use the facility. And then look at the new development component. And so let's say existing development has 70% of the cost of that 8 million and new development's going to have the delta, right, the 30%. The city could choose to pay for that facility and build a facility upfront and then get refunded by impact fees as development occurs. And that's, you know, a possibility, if that's what you're thinking. But because you're using the aquatics facility, when you do the plan-based, existing development has to pay its fair share of that facility. And so the city's got to use, as Ben said earlier, general fund monies or bond monies or some other revenue to pay for existing development's piece of that.
Any other questions for Mary Beth or Ben? And Mr. Kilkell, did you have anything else you wanted to add or needed to add to give the council the information with regard to impact fees?
All that I would add is, I'm just having to say, Tuscaloosa is also another city that has impact fees and has ordinance for this.
Which city?
Tuscaloosa.
Tuscaloosa, okay.
And I'll also just point out that there's business litigation that's occurred down in Walton County over impact fees. And just to flesh on the, a lot of the fact of Tuscaloosa is challenging whether the fees were actually used or if they're being, or for development were actually properly allocated and were money managed, things like that. So as far as the litigation that I've seen and looked at as far as impact fees, really, a lot of what I've seen is making sure that you're tracing money correctly and moving forward. But that's all.
Okay.
Were there any of the cities in Alabama, I guess each one you talked about that was litigated or sued, were they all for impact fees were put on for future growth? Or going back to Mary Beth's example of if they had already had her project approved and then went retro, were you going to go sort of retro?
Well, as far as digging into the actual cases, I was saying we're really cool by the information, because of the difference yet. It's just kind of a shock and blast. It's all been...
Thank you. Mary Beth, Ben, thank you both for your work on this. I know we have a lot to digest seeing this study. So we will think on this. And if there's no other questions, we'll let Ben hang up.
I do have a question.
Oh, sorry. Sorry, Ben. The councilwoman didn't say anyone has a question.
I don't know if something you can answer or we can answer this. Someone has said that if we do this, it will have a negative impact on businesses that come to our city. Is there any studies, is there anything that shows that to be true? Or is that just thrown out there?
Yeah, this is a question we get a lot in communities who are looking to enact impact fees. And then sometimes, you know, when a city is looking to stop these impact fees. You have good studies that try and correlate impact fees to, you know, a downward trend in the housing market. There was one on, you know, 2010-ish, and then there was another one in the early 2000s. But, you know, what I like to tell communities is, you know, you can, you can try and say, hey, we enacted these in 2008 and then our market tanked. Well, you know, the entire US housing market tanked. And, you know, cities in Kansas and Nebraska, they don't have impact fees, but, you know, their housing market also tanked at the same time. And so there's a reason that, and because we're talking about, you know, residential fees here, there's a reason that people want to move Madison. You know, the quality of life is good, you know, the schools, you know, so there's something drawing people forward. And, you know, if, if you enact these impact fees, then you can make that. So you can afford to build additional parks, you can afford to expand the land and, you know, preserve, which is actually drawing people to the city. And so, you know, when I hear, you know, someone say, oh, well, we enacted impact fee, you know, it's a pressure. There's really been no proof, you know, in any study that actually says, hey, you know, this is a direct correlation. If anything, we see that, you know, one city's enacted impact fees because they can build additional infrastructure, that, you know, their, their housing market, you know, continues to expand because you are providing, you know, additional parks, you're providing additional libraries. So, you know, people say, oh, well, you know, I can move to Madison and I'm worried about, you know, the quality of life, those, those improvements I really want, you know, going down the drain because, you know, you need a, a county town.
Okay. Thank you for that answer. How about just businesses in general? Do businesses tend to stay away because I think that we might, you know, come after them later or something like that? Because right now, all we are talking about is residential.
Right. And not necessarily. You know, some, some communities will say, hey, you know what, we, we don't want to charge our retail developments an impact fee. And so they'll look at, you know, the sales tax generated by those developments and, you know, sort of work in a credit related to that. But you've got a growing residential market. You know, there, there is demand for, you know, additional retail at least at some point. And so, you know, it all comes down to economics and, you know, is it, is it going to be beneficial? You know, is, is there enough, you know, retail or residential base there for that retail development, you know, to follow those root tops?
Okay. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Anything else for Ben?
Thank you, Ben. You can sign off now.
All right. Thanks, everyone. Have a good night.
You too. Okay. Is everyone ready to pivot back to the medical marijuana? I think we have the recent... I think we have the recent discussion from Mr. Kilborn, Mary Beth, and I think, gee, everybody who were in the room when Councilwoman Robleski said that she wanted to hear from you with respect to your thoughts and for police and safety with regard to marijuana. Sorry to put you on the spot if we didn't know that was coming.
Not a problem. Good evening, everybody. I'm staying sort of in, 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 talking to the younger officers. Medical marijuana is something that has been put forward for decades by the marijuana lobby to try to take away the stigma, the bad stigma, it's always the first step towards other things. Well, it starts with medical marijuana, and then we need a little bit more medical marijuana, and now we need smokable medical marijuana, and then next thing you know, a legal license for a person to use. And just like all the cannabis, um, we've just got to be talking about the quality of life of Madison. When we start opening these clinics, what's going to happen to the quality of life? What kind of characters are going to show up? The other problem that we've seen, yeah, this is anecdotal, just talking to these agencies around the nation. The, I guess people get a marijuana out of the car or they get a prescription and it, and it's, they all say the same thing, they all know exactly what to say when they go to a doctor to get it. And usually they're the same doctors, and most of the issues, prescriptions and all are kind of speculative. So just looking at some of the things that other departments have dealt with, and this is more the medical marijuana dispensaries with smoking stuff or anything else like that. Because of federal banking laws, money can't be wired electronically, it's cash diff, so you possibly have to close out your cash box and go to the bank and deposit money. And a lot of states have seen robbers that will monitor the clinics and the stores and then turn around and rob these guys and make their cash deposits through that. Now, I'm not going to say that it's going to happen here in Madison, number one state, or the way Alabama's looking to promote medical marijuana will result in the same kind of thing, but the potential is there. And again, these are, are going to be big changes to what we've been using here, and that's, that's got a charm to it. I just don't know that, that would increase that to clinics or any element of the city that they're doing.
I appreciate that. I mean, that, I wanted to know your thoughts on it. You're the one that, you know, maybe will have to step in should there be an issue, so, I mean, that opinion weighs a lot to me. Thank you.
So, I, I have a question. What, what will, and maybe a legal question, I don't know, what is, what is our jurisdiction in that, it's in our city, the state is monitoring that, is that...
I think more of a state responsibility to ensure that the, these are applications are done at a certain, at a certain point, and things like that.
Absolutely, basically, it would be, obviously, if there's anything as far as crime, disturbing, or robbery associated with the cash deposit.
Could you speak into the microphone?
As far as our jurisdiction goes, we have absolutely no oversight for regulating dispensaries once it actually opens. So we cannot remove them, take away the license, all that remains with, with the state. So basically, what we'd be limited to, as far as what we can do, is either first to make the decision as to whether or not to allow them in the community, which, again, this council has, it's, you can absolutely decide not to. Not passing this, the dispensaries would be able to operate within Madison. But the next regulation that we would have is just, would be simply zoning where they'd be located.
So my question really is service, right? So they are, they are, I understand they're regulated by state, right? If there's a crime, they don't call the state troops, they call Madison and say, hey.
No, that, that...
So we, we take on the burden of service without the, I guess, the, the receipt of, of dollars, is that, is that what I'm understanding?
We, although we would be able to regulate them, require business license, tax their sales tax, you are like, as far as oversight over their actual day-to-day operations, whether they abide by these regulations. That is all state holds on all that from, like I said, from receipts. So it would be up to them as far as actually maintaining and regulating them. But there's several problems the state's tried to address some of these, but these are all very valid conservative if you ask.
And one other question for you that I had earlier, you said thirty-seven licenses will be...
I probably spoke...
Is that thirty-seven licenses and thirty-seven dispensaries?
It's thirty-seven dispensaries.
That's what I meant.
There's licenses that are allowed, they only have so many that you can do within the county, and when you add up how many licenses are issued, it comes up to thirty-seven dispensaries, so I, I just spoke.
And that's statewide, thirty-seven dispensaries statewide?
Statewide with the first issuance of, of license. Now, we don't know what the state, you know, I think they maintained a couple of years to sort this out, maybe they made it wide open, maybe they made it more restricted. We don't know what the future may entail, but that, that's what we're looking at first thing, is first to have the licenses that they're looking at.
And that prevents us from doing nothing now to do something later?
Um, yeah, so, so we, we would have to have, we would have to have something by December the thirty-first, where we pass ordinance and we notify the cannabis commission by, within seven days of ordinance. It basically means that we, we basically have a less than two month window in order to, in order to authorize the dispensaries. Now, are you saying you don't do it now?
That's for the first round, right? Was that correct?
Uh, that is a, a good question, and I, I, I probably didn't get to the straight answer on. I would like to take a look at that, I, I, and if Mary Beth has an opinion on this or just look at, you know, invite her opinion, but I would have to give you, I would have to look at the statute a second time. I, I don't, I can't anticipate that this will basically be forever now or twenty years from now, but I want to make sure that that, that is the case before I say that. I would say that I would have to look at the statute one more time and give you the answer as to whether or not this will preclude us from reconvening in a year from now, trying to look at this again.
Well, not, you know, not that I can consider the future, but I can certainly remember the past, and, you know, it was just only a few years ago that the city Athens passed, you know, that you've had alcohol, so, you know, that was passed some years ago. So I'm sure, you know, this is more the first hand, so that's kind of, kind of what I'm asking, I mean, you know, if we wait years, we're, we're fed, and we get the information.
Exactly.
That's all I'm asking.
If, if we, if we miss this ship, there'll be another ship coming along. I guess my question too is...
I'll get you a direct answer to that question.
Thank you.
You know, how much sales tax reserving can we expect? Like on each filling of a prescription, is that person five dollars, is it five hundred dollars, is it five thou... I mean, some prescriptions are outrageous, it'd be interesting to know the cost versus benefit that we would be facing.
And unfortunately, from a legal perspective, I, I don't know what sort of projections we could, by the council on that, as far as what actual revenue that we might receive. It also comes down to who, who actually applies maybe, and I, if we have anybody in line, I'm not sure if...
Roger stepped out.
Yeah. I don't know if we have any active applications. I believe that there was one person that ordered a question about it, I don't know if they actually are seriously requiring, I think that their colleagues may have had some discussions. So I don't know how many applications we, you know, we really honestly can anticipate from this, and that will of course affect any sort of revenue...
Right.
Projections that we might have. I haven't seen any victims for that.
I think Mary Beth though spoke to that, didn't she, earlier, in terms of the interest and...
The day office and the planning department have been contacted. Mayor and I have had two meetings, or at least phone conversations with companies that were interested. And then there's, I don't know, there's two others that have made inquiry that we haven't necessarily met with. And I think Steve has, Smith has, has talked with one of them as well. I haven't seen any revenue projections, but one of the companies that the mayor and I met with, they currently have a dispensary in Arkansas. And they indicated that they get eight hundred customers a day on a weekday. They operate like an Apple store is what he called it, in that it's, you know, very clean, you know, just streamlined facility. They have fifteen cash registers within their store, and they get about twelve hundred customers on Saturday. Again, I don't know if that's a five dollar sale.
You've seen where it was on TV show, that's immediately where my mind went.
I have not.
It's on a riverboat.
Yeah, I have not seen that show. So they do a, a steady business as we understand it, and, and he also indicated, again, this is anecdotal, that over half of his customers are senior citizens.
They have aliments.
Yeah, yeah, but we, we, we can certainly look into getting some revenue numbers.
I was trying to pull it up because I had it, I don't have it.
Okay, yeah, I don't think I've seen anything.
Be beneficial because there's a chance that we maybe increase policing in that area, so I, I think that, that figure, those figures would be very helpful.
Yeah, his, his store's about a five thousand square foot store, about sixty parking spots, about eight hundred people per day, as he talked about, sitting on about two acres. It's on the third busiest road in the respective city of what he's in. If this one of Arkansas was, he wants, he would do Madison as, as dispensary, Russell Village is where they grow it, that's where they, in his case, where they would grow it. And in his case, eighty percent of his folks are professional folks that come get it and senior citizens.
And I don't think he talked about revenue.
I don't think he did, I think when I was listening to the state call, when the state was talking about the regulatory pieces, they talked about Louisiana, Missouri, and Arkansas. And I could get you numbers as far as how much revenue they're generating, and I've noticed I couldn't math even with, when she was on. With, you know, on, on basically twenty-five dispensaries, you know, total number times twenty-five times point zero three five, that kind of thing. So we could get that information.
That would be very helpful. If it's millions of dollars, I mean, that makes a difference.
Chief, I have a question for you. Um, Huntsville has an ordinance, Athens, I believe, just passed one, I think Decatur's looking at it soon. So we're basically going to be surrounded by communities that have these dispensaries. I don't know what proximity they will have to our city. One is, do you see that there would be a difference in the amount of policing you would have to do for an additional dispensary, should it be placed within our city limits versus things that are coming through our city limits? Did that make any sense at all on your side?
Yes, if we have that here, number field of dreams, build a table come.
Yeah.
Just don't know who they, they are, and do we want to bring a certain element to this area? It might be a good idea to just sit back and watch and see what happens in these other areas and see if it's a, a, a big thing for us, but...
I mean, do we feel like that, though, that we may have some of those patrons, you know, traveling through our city that could also cause issues?
It's just, it's very possible. We, we, we get some, we get some marijuana, almost not a bigger basis here, just on some practice. I mean, it's, it's out there, everybody's using it, but again, these, these things are always incremental, it always starts with something small that seems very benign to get everybody to sign on to it, and then it just starts expanding from there.
One of the things we have to do, if the chief is, we, we know the city, and if, well, I'll work with you, we can have you call our police chief in the police department. And let's get some real, real world intel from someone who's actually doing it and seen it happen. And then get you that, you know, get you guys that information by the next meeting that actually talks about what happened. Not only, you know, and again, not, not like the real world, here's what happened, here's what we've seen, here's what, either there's more money that we have to put into it, hey, it really has an impact to this, which I can't see. And then secondly, how much money is in there and what we can expect from a revenue standpoint, to give you guys good facts on that.
Perfect, that would be great, thank you.
My pleasure.
He's eating now, he's dead on here about how much money they have.
It's not bad, I mean, to make money, I'm with you, I can tell you about money. It's a stepping stone.
What was the sentence that you said?
It's a stepping stone.
No.
It's a, it's a stepping stone. And quite frankly, if you got it in Athens, you got Decatur, you got Huntsville.
Our citizens do get it.
It ain't that far to drop Huntsville, it ain't that far to drop Athens, it ain't that far to drop Decatur if you really need it, you'll drop it again.
Thank you, chief.
So council, I have a question for you to leave, because we have a draft ordinance that they're ready to present for a first reading. But are you even interested in having a first reading?
I would like to have the information that Mary has mentioned before we move forward. And I am interested in the money, I mean, you know, it, it could be a huge thing, and it could be a benefit to many of our citizens. And I think the money could make a difference depending on where it is.
I have one question for you, Mary Beth, what, sorry, what did you get?
I didn't have that conversation.
So, you, you've, you've seen this around the country, and you've seen this, you know, how it works. When those businesses come in, what if the businesses come with, you know, for instance, you know, like McDonald's builds across the street, and, you know, Burger King's going to build over there, Lowe's builds over there, here comes Home Depot.
Yeah.
If a dispensary comes, does a pawn shop come, does it, whatever, what, what businesses come with it?
Well, I haven't, you know, I worked in California for a very long time, but we, the jurisdiction that I worked in, we didn't allow, at that time, we weren't allowed, right, because they're, they're, they're not federally. And so the city wasn't really interested in, it was very early on. So I haven't worked in a jurisdiction that has had them. Of course, you travel and you can kind of see them in different locations. I haven't studied it, but certainly can do some more work and get back to you. The one that's in Arkansas is a standalone building, it looks like a CBS, frankly, kind of, or a Walgreens, or a Brighter, or whatever. It just is a standalone commercial building. I've seen different kind of businesses, I guess, in strip centers. I don't know that there's a, a pattern of development, if you will, associated with them. It, it certainly, that depends on where they locate and, and what the landlord would wrap, right, if they're in a multi-tenant building, you know, what the landlord would rent to. So we, we can look into it, we can reach out to some cities that have allowed them to see what's, what's happened. I've never been in one of these facilities, so I, I, I don't really, I try to, you know...
Appreciate you letting us know that.
So my curiosity comes in, so, I mean, my sister-in-law is a pharmacist, right, I mean, they deal with all types of controlled drugs, I mean, narcotics, I mean, all kinds of things that you, unreal, the, the, the regulations they got to follow, and what you got to have to give. Why in the world, if, if, if it's medical marijuana, why not use the established dispensing venues we already have?
That's what I was going to ask.
Public, those places that are already mandated by regulations of how they have to administer and control things versus a, if I like a better term, pop-up weed store. I mean, you know, whatever, I mean, I, through those methods and those venues, where you have to have a prescription and it's governed and it's mandated by it, peace. When you got a standalone store that this is the only reason for their existence is to sell weed, and we got somebody that's willing to write a prescription, if you think we got a problem with opioids, now you're going to have marijuana to it.
Well, I would be curious to know how this is product compared to the CBD oil? I mean, you know, because we, a store came into Madison, we had no control over it.
This has THC.
This is marijuana.
And the, and CBD has no THC, right?
Okay.
Yeah.
Now, just two things. Um, I'm just going to stick to your point, basically, the way this is regulated, with the state regs were set up, my way is to disqualify some of those CBS, you know, it's, because they have these additional requirements for dedicated parking and, or special security measures, and it's always in trouble, so they almost regulate them into being more of a standalone. Now, I'm not saying that necessarily has to be standalone, I think that you could get away with scrutiny, but I think that that's probably why this isn't... Unfortunately, I think the regulations for all those extra security measures, you can't really pull off major CBS or republics for the dispensaries, so they're trying to make more of a dispensary, let's say, lock it in a box.
It's used for a medical purpose, it's a medical drug.
That was special.
Well, it's supposed to...
I, I, I mean, real quick, I'm, I'm kind of sorry. I'm, I'm, like, I'm, I'm more along lines with, with John, and I, I don't think we have any first market. You know, if there's, if there's revenue there, there's revenue there, and I don't think we're going to miss that much. You know, we have to be the first developers of this particular technology, so if you want to put it on, that's up to you guys.
What, what do you think, Lon?
Before we throw out everything, I'm not saying for or against, I'm just saying, we have some questions that we've asked to leave. We don't think we're being a second round of a group of... We don't think there would be a second round if a pool is.
I think I heard this is your representative, CEO.
We want to verify that, okay? We want to ver, get some potential revenue numbers. We want to get some policing issue numbers or information about increasing crime, et cetera, et cetera. Also, we want to know what other businesses are attracted at the sort, what was the development pattern, I believe, was the, the time that Mayor Duffy is. So before we make a decision up or down, if we could do that information, I think that would make it clear for everybody. If we knew for sure there was a second round, I think a lot of people would be okay, we'd just kind of step them back and see what happens. And then if we knew what the revenue was, I mean, we have to look at all sides of an issue before we make a decision. Because that is, this is not just our personal opinion. This is what our citizens want, this is what we are fully informed on. And so I think when we get those answers, then we can just put it away and make the best possible decision.
I heard from citizens, and they were very insulted, they were too, because where they live, how it's structured, how it's built. And just, but they're sitting with downy, and I personally, you know, very, you know, like I come here, I don't want to, I don't believe in it, because I'm asking, so.
Was it medical marijuana, or was it recreational marijuana? Did they move here from Colorado? It makes a difference.
Made a distinction of that. I don't, off the top of my head, I couldn't.
Sure, it makes a difference, yeah.
It, um, well, as you said, opiates, I mean, you can have a prescription and look how it got out of hand. And, you know, it's available all around us, so let them go, but they don't have to go that far. We're, they're, our citizens won't suffer because we don't have one, because it is a damn close proximity to get a house.
It's still reasonable to be fully informed on the issue before you make a decision.
I'm, I'm just saying, I've heard from citizens. Okay.
I just want to let the council know that I can have an answer to that question for us. When's the next round? Like, if we do nothing now, when's the next, middle of the week, council to prove this? I love it. Ask for it tomorrow.
I, I don't consider the need. I, I've got, I think I've, I've, I've got what I need.
I guess I'd like to know, I mean, whether it's the next round or not, if we do nothing? I mean, like, do we need to do something, or is it okay if we do nothing?
We, we either have to do something on the next meeting, we have to have a first reading, or, or it does.
I think he was talking about, he said it would be like another round, right, anytime soon. I thought it was interesting when, when Channel Thirty-One came today and interviewed me just on this, and say, hey, we'll talk about it tonight. You know, there's medical benefits, there's financial benefits, but I don't know if it's something beneficial for the city. And she had done a meet a lot of folks in Athens, and maybe we'll go watch that. And she said, I was amazed at how many folks said, look, not necessarily for me, but I got this person with cancer, and let me tell you where it makes a big difference for them. So again, I'll balance stuff, we'll get all the information we can, get you information for you guys to make their decisions.
John, I think you were asking if we do nothing, it just, we don't get one.
We don't have, we don't have a round, right?
I want to make sure, is there a, how you don't do something?
We don't have to say yes or no. If we do nothing, it's a no.
Right, but what we have to decide now is if we're gonna put it on the next meeting or first reading.
I can move now.
Well, we could have a presentation for you guys and, and have it, you can either walk it on, or you could have it on there and then just decide against it, that way.
Well, I, I would hate to walk things on.
I would write it on the agenda, and then us decide to table it, or whatever we decide after the week.
Put it on there, if we decide we want to table it, or write it down, or.
There's no motion.
Right.
So the thing is, we'll have a first reading on the next.
I think one of the biggest concerns I have is the lack of local control. I have to say that if we're bound by what the state's doing and their speed at doing things, and if we're seeing things that aren't working out, that concerns me greatly. The other question that maybe you could add to the packet of information for us is, can you have a limit if you zone for allowing these dispensaries in a B three? Can you put a quota on it so that in the city, we're zoning for it, but we only want to let one in? Like, would you, could you foresee a, a situation where the state would grant more licenses than maybe you want to?
Well, Brian mentioned that there is a separation requirement, like they can't be so close to each other, and I haven't looked at that yet. We wouldn't recommend from a land use perspective that you say, well, we're only gonna allow one, but there's other ways to get around it. So we could, I mean, we'll look at what the state's distance requirement is. You could include a distance requirement such that, you know, really, there could only be one, let's say, on Madison Boulevard and one on Highway Seventy-two. I mean, there are creative ways that we can put stuff into the land use regulations. It would come, if, if you went this path, it'd become what we call conditional use. Meaning it could be allowed in the three, but under certain conditions that, you know, they have to be X feet away from each other, or, or whatever, we would, we would craft that if that's what you wanted to do. I wanted to address two other things really quickly. This is a question that I asked of one of the businesses that we talked about, because they can't use the interstate commerce banking system, right? You can't, because of the federal regulation, I guess. And so this particular business, they have a bank that they do business with, this one was also in Arkansas. And they said their bank is going to open a bank in Alabama, so that they don't, because they don't want to operate as a cash business the way, you know, what was referred to, because we were concerned about that, right? We, we asked that question, do you have robberies, do you have that issue? And so he indicated that they have a bank established, and, I mean, this is a lot of money to be made in this industry, so that bank is preparing to open a bank in Alabama. And then the second thing I would point out, due to our very interesting jurisdictional boundary, be prepared. It's not a reason to allow them in, in Madison by any means, but I would fully expect there's gonna be one on somewhere on Madison Boulevard and somewhere on Highway Seventy-two. It may not be in Madison, it may just be right on the outskirts. But all of the businesses that we've talked to like the Madison location because it's central to the area, you've got a lot of people who drive through Madison, drive by Madison, on their way to work or on their way to home. There's definitely a lot of areas on both corridors that are just outside of Madison's limits. And so just don't be surprised that that occurs if the city doesn't go forward. Again, it's fine not to go forward, but it doesn't mean it's not going to be in your backyard.
Question on that. How, so how's that with respect to the county? We got several unincorporated areas within the city, and we have a piece of there.
I do not know if the county is, yeah, I don't know if the county's adopting the ordinance.
I don't have an answer to that, but that is another thing that's very, I think they'd put hands on that sort of issue, and would they act yet? Just because they haven't acted, now let's see if they couldn't act.
Please, yeah, 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 I was just curious, because I mean, that, that'd be interesting.
There's plenty of county property on Seventy-two.
Plenty of county property, like, in the land of our city.
Jail stations.
Right.
We just know that they're very interested in this location. We just know that they're very interested in this, this geographic area.
It's older.
Okay, so our city's ten miles across.
At eight, yeah.
Okay, so if we said you can be within ten miles of each other, that would limit us one, right?
Um, yeah, I, uh, yeah, I, I guess that's a way to do it. I mean, we'll, you know, do some better and then craft something. And again, it just depends, you know, if you wanted to allow only one in the jurisdiction, or if you wanted to allow one northern, one southern. And I don't even know, you know, Madison Boulevard was much more interested, uh, there was more interest in Madison Boulevard, I think because of its proximity to the interstate and Highway Seventy-two. But those are the two that we've been asking about.
But what you're talking about, about it being on either side, really doesn't matter, because if one in the city of Madison, we got, we can't be within ten miles, that doesn't mean that if they're down in the county, then three miles away.
Right, because that's a state law, and I don't know what that separation is on the state side, I don't, yeah.
Okay, final, item on the agenda, the community center bid that we had postponed from Monday night's meeting. Is there any other information that you or Mr. Smith found?
I don't think we have anything else to present. I'm more than happy to listen and answer any questions, and let you guys continue the discussion now that we know that you've had more time to look at it, but I don't think we have anything else to present.
Do we have a copy of the floor plan?
I have to do it.
Who are we asking this question?
So I guess not here and not luck in front of us here, no, neither one of those.
Wait, we, we don't have a copy of the bid?
Not here, like, this, like, with us, right, here.
Well, is it in the building?
Sorry, say it again.
Is it in the building? Could somebody run down the hallway and get it? I mean, I'm not trying to be difficult, I'm just.
I think the bid was in your passive, you were running the audit, that was a bit of mental work, just trying to be able.
But that wasn't everybody that bid on it, that was just one bid.
But that was a little bit of.
Okay, and what about a, a floor plan?
We can get that information, I would have it tonight, but I didn't know, nobody, nobody said I needed it until tonight, so I had to turn it.
Well.
Maybe, maybe they, you better, you're not.
It, it's hard for us.
I understand, but if we're not asked to bring something, I don't know.
I didn't ask you to wear shoes. You have them on. I'm not trying to be ugly.
But you were there, and that wasn't very.
That was.
Oh, 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 because you were pretty down there the other day, too.
Well, no, this is me, you know, I'm sorry.
Okay, one, one, one time, Mrs. Spears has the floor, she's asking certain questions, so let's let her.
I apologize, that was unthought for, and you didn't deserve that.
True.
And I'm very sorry. But I would like to see the floor plan. Is there one that you could get for us so that we could look at it?
No, I can go get the one that I showed you, several ones back, it's very similar, it's not the exact whole plan, it's very similar to what it looks like, but there wasn't any changes to that one.
That, I think that would be helpful.
Yeah, we need that. And then, and then when it comes to, because we want to get you guys what you want. And we just weren't asked to bring anything other than we want to table it till tonight and talk about it. We had two days from Monday until today, and we were prepared to at any point talk again. I didn't have anybody contacting me.
Penny reached out.
Well, you know, you asked those questions, you sure did, you asked those questions, we got the information back, too. So anybody who asked a, asked a question, we got the information back. So we, I mean, we want to get you guys what you want. So, you know, what, what, when it comes to, when you're looking for the bids, I guess we gave you the bid that was the low bid.
So we don't have a bid, what we have, we have a, a number, and it's, it's stamped, it's Noah. I mean, that's, that's all it is. Did, did legal do the bid, did finance do the bid, I mean, who saw that, any others who did the bid?
I'm sorry, he's speaking to the mic, I don't know, I had a hard time hearing.
Architect did the bid.
So, all right, maybe I misunderstand how we do this. How do we typically do, how do we typically do bids? When we, when we send a bid out?
Typically, the city can do the bid, up and this was in process, our city attorney left, and our bid person left. And so another option is to have the, or our vendors do the bid, like Noah and Pearson. We handled it the same way with the flowers, AD Company did for the flowers. So we had Noah and Pearson when we did for the community center.
Okay, let's dissect that just for just a moment. You, what date did you, I haven't seen, Councilmember Mal did ask for bid documents in, in the email. And I saw your response that you, you have it already. But as I'm looking at this, I'm not seeing the issuance, so can you just talk through the timeline for me just a moment? When did, when did you or whoever tell Noah and Pearson to issue the bid?
Pre-meeting was then, at some point in September, we opened the bids in October. I don't have a specific date, it's probably right now.
Okay, so you had a pre-meeting in September, and you, you issued the bid in October?
We, we opened the bids in, in November. It went to bid in October, we opened the bids in November.
And the bid opened in November?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. The bid opened, that, that in October.
October Twenty-Fifth was the bid opening day.
Yes.
So then, when did you issue the bid?
It was a couple weeks prior to that, it's when we opened up the bid.
So. The bid opening was Tuesday.
I, I don't, what's my page?
And there was a little thing that said bid town, that's where you, at the top left is where the date is.
Okay, so. Wait, when was the notice issued for the bid?
I don't have my dates, I don't have mine. I know we had a pre-meeting in September, and then the bids were opened in, in, in the October.
Issue not to open the bid opening. Who was at the bid opening? I don't think that was in our package, was it?
Noah and Pearson was at the bid opening, I was at the opening. The two companies that placed bids were at the opening. Uh, that four of them had been at the bid opening as well.
Was there, was there a signing sheet, or?
Yes.
And I'm sorry, he, if he was included, I must admit this, because I, I'm accustomed to seeing who, who witnessed the bid in the bids that I've approved, so.
Noah and Pearson had three employees there, one which was a notary, so, I mean, they were in charge of the bid. So they opened the bid, they, they processed all the legalities of the bid.
So who, who can tell the council that we met all of the proper deadlines and advertising? If we had done the bid ourselves, that's generally legal, has checklist, right? And they can tell us when notice was issued, did you advertise?
Noah and Pearson had all the information.
So.
Your words, not legal, I guess I, I might.
I want to make sure, before the council votes, I want to make sure that we can say that we comply with bid law. In terms of, normally, if this were done in-house, it would either be procurement or legal. And there is a checklist, and there's a, Mr. Kebler, can you come up here for just a moment so I can try to get this straight? So, and, and this is, this is surprising to me in one sense that it went out, but just, Mr. Kebler, when did you start working for us?
I started with the city July Twenty-Fifth.
July Twenty-Fifth. And, and what is our normal bid process? What happens?
Well, during this process, I think that Steve did say it correctly, as far as we were in the transition period. When I came in, we were transitioning to a position where we would have a procurement position with finance, and that it would no longer be handled legally, up to this point, it had been handled by legal. Basically, the legal assistant had basically put together the bids, put out ads, et cetera, and, you know, all, every stage of the bid, had worked through a procurement software that we had, and we answered the questions. And what we did was, we were in process through September, and I can't call the precise date, that we actually had the discussions, and it was ultimately decided that it would go to finance. But up through about, I think mid-September, we had established that a position in finance that would basically pick it up and start doing procurement. So this would have, I believe, Steve spoke right, that this was during that period of transition between legal and having that procurement position.
So today, if a bid comes in, does finance handle it, or do you?
It would be, finance would handle it. Way that would, would be handled is if a department came and said, we need to have this bid. The department itself is responsible for putting together bid specifications for whatever needs. The procurement officer, which, you know, may change, under finance, would basically then. The procurement officer, which may change, under finance would basically then fill the blanks for a bid packet. It says, this is what we need for invitation to bid. We would then go in and assign a bid number, as far as if this was the ninth, tenth, eleventh bid for the year. And then we would proceed to put that into our software, where, once we actually submitted the bids, placed ads for the bids. Then, that's how we keep track of the bid moving forward till we actually accept the bids. Give them a date, a notice, depending on the dollar value and what's in bid. Then there would be physical location for them to come with their bids, we open them. But if it happened today, basically, this would go through the procurement position with finance. Plus, legal would be there all along the way reviewing every document before it went out. And we don't make the decisions, or we're not part of the decision-making as far as who's the lowest responsible bidder. But we would view all the documents that were submitted to invite the bid, and we would also prepare contract on the back end. I hope that I always got some work.
So along those lines to answer your question, that's the flow chart. So right now, in legal, John Howard is responsible for managing our bid process. And that's the flow chart that Brian just talked about, that takes the different departments that have it. And that's how we work it now, that we have someone in City Hall that can manage that. So that's the flow chart right there.
Okay, so if you, if you're presenting a bid, if you put a bid on our agenda, my assumption is that you have, you have a checklist, or John Howard does now.
We do.
And he checks to make sure you've issued the notice, and at, at the right time, that the bid opens at the time that you notified people it was due. That you had advertised, and in this case, because it's some, you have to advertise in three papers, or what?
This project, as I understand, the ultimate bid was worth as eleven million, so under the public works statute, it would be over five hundred thousand, which require ads to be placed in three different papers. It's below five hundred thousand, if you just have to do one paper. So there's, there is a difference, yes.
So if it's on the agenda for the council to vote on, I would expect that I would be able to ask you, or Mr. Howard, whoever it is in this transition period. Have we met bid law, have we satisfied all the requirements, or the dates right? Can you tell me that?
Under this, since it was announced, I simply don't have the knowledge to be able to answer that question without the representatives that were here from the architect to suffice as far as... But yes, we have a checklist that we would go through, and I'm sure that the architect would have had something as well, but I don't know that.
And basically, do you know if we have any kind of council representation at the meeting, or they have, is there a chance?
It's a good question, and I guess we could probably call in right now and see what documents he may have, I mean...
He's got everything, they report everything.
Did you come to the mics?
So a good question to answer, but I mean, if there...
They document all that information, we can give that information. And I've probably got most of that information on a computer already, because they're sending it over. But it's not Noah and Pearson's first bid, and so they understand the process and understand bid law.
Do we have a contract too, that, was that in there?
A contract for...
For the works that is to be done? Probably not, because we haven't signed it, right? Or do we have a proposed contract?
No. When we award the bid, we'll have the contract with the receivers, they provide the cost estimate, and all work. I apologize, I'm not a bid person, so I can't enter all the guarantees of the stuff. I just know that Noah and Pearson were in the bid force, that was part of their contract that you guys approved. They've done everything they needed to legally, and we've got a couple days to work with it.
So let me ask, in the premise, this is not permanent, difficult or nasty at all. When they, when it came to, it sounds like the flyovers were done the same way, we did it?
Right.
How do we know that all of those were done? I mean, I didn't hear the same questions at that time, I'm just saying, we just, did we go through all, did you, as someone, so you were confident, in that case, that you went through all those different gates that you knew, you had confidence that it was done correctly?
So what are the differences with the flyover bid and the AECom situation? Council knew we had approved AECom, we had approved a study to be done, because the time between the previous bid and this one, we didn't know. And we had approved them doing this bid, we were aware. I have to be frank, I, I didn't know this bid was coming up, that it had been issued. I was present in this room when the bids were opened for the flyover. I never knew the bids were opening on this, I didn't know the deadline until you all sent us the email on Tuesday. So I'm trying to figure out, because here's what I do know, it isn't normal for us to do this type of work outside. And it's more normal for us, I've never, maybe you can help me, because I've only been here two years. I have approved multiple bids for the school system. So there's certain things I see in a bid, like the opening sheet, I can see normally who was present. So you know who your witnesses are, that's a characteristic thing that I did not see in this package. When Councilman Powell asked, could we see the bid documents, because it was being done outside, I don't have anyone. I tried to ask Roger, who's got it? I tried to ask Mr. Kibler, he didn't have some of the stuff, he was trying to, to reach you. And of course, Teddy had emailed you yesterday, so I, because it's not being done, and I don't know, can you tell me when we ever, besides the issue on AECom? Because we were, we had approved as a council, we had multiple work sessions. We, we had talked about that project, we'd asked them to, we even authorized extra money for them to do the study. So we were kind of tracking it along the way. This process was surprising to me in a couple ways. So that's why I feel like I can't vote till I know that the notice was issued, what the specs were, what date we opened it, we had course drawn. Because I don't, I don't have anybody in City Hall I can ask.
How do we, okay, but let's...
So can we take a step back, maybe?
Let's do that, let's take a step, how do we fix this problem?
Well, I, I think it's a great question, I was gonna say, maybe if we, if we put that to the side, and I guess council can always approve this contingent on, you know, when we do the things that we do with business licenses for liquor. In some instances, contingent on making sure final approvals are done on this or this. So how do you fix it first? We make sure that, you know, if you passed it, if you decided it was worth, it was a good investment for our city. You can pass it contingent on proof that everything was done appropriately through bid law, that when we put our city attorney in charge of it, we do that. That's one way to accomplish that in my, in my mind.
And I would just add, as far as, you know, basically, just looking at what they did, I don't think that would be a very long process. That would probably be done, exchange of documents, and just maybe a phone call that I can schedule as soon as possible, make sure that they did go through all those process. But as far as, I'm sure that, you know, again, I want to review it, I understand that the council wants it to be reviewed. But I would be surprised and shocked that they missed any of these major points in the bid process. But I'd be happy to do that just as soon as possible, so that we can, so the council could address this and pass those issues as far as whether it met bid, and whether there was lowest responsible bidder. We will do that very quickly.
I have a question that doesn't pertain to this bid packet. If y'all are finished with that, I'd like to ask it, if you're still going.
No, wait, that's fine.
Okay. Who was consulted to give input for the design of the community center? Did you have a committee of people from our community that came in and gave input? Or did department heads do this? How was the design?
Great question. Didn't we do a survey? And we hired a consultant at those senior centers to look at that entire building. And we did a community survey, it was during COVID, because it's in here together, and we wanted to do a...
Pop out, pop out.
We did, we did a survey during COVID, and we wanted to do a community meeting, but just because of circumstances, we couldn't. We hired a consultant out of Ohio, and Mark Jacobson, who's the city administrator, who's now... So, we got, I think we got like twelve hundred responses.
I remember that certainly now, thank you. Okay. As the prosecutor, you got the surveys, and that, that information came in. So who prioritized items, was it just purely based on counting the votes in the survey? Or how were the priority items determined?
A little bit of staff meeting, meeting with some of our senior groups to see what they wanted, some of our needs as far as our master, parks master plan. What we wanted the park department to look like, and, you know, the needs, the facility needs, that we're gonna need from here.
And McDad had different footings as well, remember?
And we had with McDad, got their input. We have accessory rooms in there, we got those McDad's input, made some restory modifications because of McDad's input.
There was a lot of community need.
So, have, after you've got all that information, was there a time for the community to look at the final floor plan and designs? And give additional comments?
We had not done that.
I think, so I specifically remember, basically what happened, purchased the building, last council purchased the building, it sat there for a year.
Thank you.
My goodness.
Yeah, your goodness.
You know, I speak, speaks often. So, I guess... Tell it fashion, and then I'll speak this off. Anyway, so, we, we went out and purchased that, and we did the lottery sale, right? So that building sat, sat there for, I think about a year. We didn't know what we were doing with the building, we sent the survey out, went out to the community. And we got input of what was that building even gonna be? Was it gonna be a, was it gonna be a senior center, was it going to be a, I think we had a couple different things, do you remember?
One of the major things in the survey was hockey green was one of the communities.
Yeah.
Major responses, I think it was number two, but number one was senior.
So there were a couple different things, and it basically turned into a community center from there. And I'm, guys, I'm just giving you the histories, there's no way we're at, I think we have to back up to go forward unfortunately. So, we decided, you know, as a community, we want a senior center, and these are the things that need to be in it. Corey went out and got that information of what needs to be in that center. And he, he came back and that went into the drawing, I can't see the drawing. I think the old drawing had some of those things in there, I think it had at least one or two ceramic rooms and a couple of other things. So that happened, alright. The new council comes in, I'm finance chair, and we have a conversation. We weren't sure, again, that we had the money to do the entire thing at the entire time, but we all voted and said, okay, guys, we want to go forward with this, but we don't know what that looks like. We hired an engineering firm, and well, in the first budget, at one point, one, it's in our packet, we were giving, we put the budget one point one to spend, okay? All of that did not get spent, it got reallocated this year in this year's budget, but I'll come to that in a minute. So what we did spend is three, four hundred thousand, maybe five. We hired term construction to manage the project, they failed their job, they didn't manage the project properly, we released them.
That's right.
Okay? This is stuff we've done, and then, now we're going to this year's budget. This year's budget, finance committee, at the time, Ms. Bartlett was chair. We sat down, we've done the study, we know we're going forward. But again, we're at a point where we cannot, we can't spend this, all this money at one time, because there's other things that are going on, that we need to take care of. And there's other things that we don't know of, and how much they cost, because we haven't been able to get together as a group. We've asked for the CIP list, okay? Agreement was made that we would go forward, just we would give enough money this, in this year's budget to go forward. But in addition, we would come up with a CIP list to see, you know, where things fail. Alright, now, all that was down in September. In August, that's when we received this email here.
August 25th.
It, it, this is the email that was in your packet the other night, it came from Steve. And basically, he tells us, hey, we're going forward to do this. You know, we, we expect, we expected to be seven nine million dollars. That's the number we had heard, seven nine million dollars in a meeting, so that's kind of what we were expecting, okay? And he stays in here, you know, when this actually goes, when the bid goes forward, you guys, council, are going to have to bid on this. So everything's in order here. I think where the issue comes in place is a couple of different things. We had a transition in departments, and we had legal coming on, we had some things there, we tracked transfer over to, to finance. Those things happened, and then a couple things got circumvented, alright? Again, I don't think we went through the, this is my opinion now, this has, this is, this is all my opinion, this has nothing to do with this. I think we circumvented two things. First of all, the contracts thing, it's abnormal, at best, it needs to be reviewed. If our council tells us that's okay, then that's, that is the person that we have hired to say it is legal or it's not legal for the city. The other thing that happened that should not happen is, I can't tell you the ordinance, I don't have it with me. But I do remember in two thousand nineteen, maybe eighteen, we had an ordinance that said, we will not send a bid out until we've identified the dollars. We did not identify where those funds came from. We made a list of where we thought they came from, Steve, Steve went through and scraped dollars of past budgets. And what had, what may have been left, what may not have been left, and that was, quote, maybe how they say it's identified. But that's not the, that's not the intent of that ordinance. The intent of that ordinance is come to finance committee and say, okay, where, where is the dollars that we need? You know, this is what we need, where are those dollars? So, you know, I think two things need to, need to change or make right. It is the council's prerogative, and it's the council's duty to take care of the funds. If there are funds that are needed for something, it should come through council. It should come through first finance committee, and then full council, or it should come through full council. And the reason for that is because council works with, with, with the finance department, we know what the budget is, we know what the priorities are. And we are the keepers of the purse. That is a fact. When it comes to, to the execution of that, that's not ours. That's executive branch, that's, that's the mayor's office. So, all I can tell you is for my part, I will do what's right in the councils. If the mayor and that leadership does, does their portion differently or incorrectly, that's on them. But as a city official, we have to hold everybody accountable in that process, whether it be us or them. You know, that's, that's the way it is. Again, the process is backwards, I don't think anybody here is against the project, I think we're for the project, but I think a couple things. Details, we need to know what's in the senior system, what's, what's in that center, what's that look like? You know, how's it been vetted? And I think we've forgotten, because it's been such a month. And I think we've forgotten, because it's been such a long process, how it was vetted. We've forgotten some of that, but it was vetted, okay? There's some people I'm, I'm looking at in this room thinking it's not, but the fact was, it was. We, we operated here in COVID, we didn't stop, we continued. Department heads, Cory's been working on it for two years, he's been working on it, he's done a good job. Steve's been working on it. I mean, this, this process is continuing. So, you know, I think we just have to get the process right, alright? And we have to see what's in it, how much is, is between, you know, so, how, you know, if I said, we're gonna go out and build a house and told you it's gonna cost somewhere between seven nine million dollars. Okay, I think I got seven nine million dollars. And then I come back to you when it's time to start that house and go, you know what? I know I told you two months ago that it's seven nine million dollars, but things have changed in two months and it's twelve. I think anybody could sit and go, wait a second. So, that's what's happened. That's, that's where we are now. If everybody here thinks this is a decent project, how would we fix all of that? That's, that's what we're here for, not to, we're not here to say you did this and you did that and, you know, that kind of thing. We're here to take care of the business and maps, how do we fix the business and maps? And I think we have to lean on department heads and, and those guys to do that. So, that's, that's my piece of speech, sorry for so long.
It didn't have been a resolution rather than an ordinance? I'm wondering if that's what it was, that you were referencing?
You know, I don't, I don't know what it was, but the, the point is it's a process and we put in place for reasons. And if, if we spend this money, I sat on finance now, like I said, from however long I've been here. I've, COVID's kind of spent my brain on that, I think six years, whatever it is. I sat on the speech and said, when I came in, we are then, and we are now, and hopefully will continue to be a conservative group. The only reason we have what we have today, to be able to go out and write a check for this facility is because what was started then. We save money, we save money, we save money. But we can't continue to just spend, we have to stop. This, this, this will take our, this will take our, for about three to five years. So, even if you are to do a CIP list, you can't fund it unless you go out and get a bond. This right now, it's gonna have to get across the month. Right now, we're writing out of a check, we're not gonna borrow a balance. But when we write out our checkbook, instead of having a, you know, a fifty-five percent balance, whatever it is, we're gonna drop down to a twenty-five percent balance. I mean, that, that's, you know, don't quote me on those numbers, but that's pretty close. That's really what we're pressing financially.
Would like to respond that time. So, when we worked on the twenty-three budget, we talked about this project. We didn't know what cost of, we talked about it. And we were on finance committee, and we discussed the, the bid that was coming up. And he said, we've got it spread out for multiple years, and that's what we've done. Now, that's our fund balance pretty large right now. As we've talked before, and this is a county decision, there, there's a fine line with that fund out, right? Because it's gotta be, it's gotta be strong upon break-ins and, and other aspects of business. But at some point, you start avoiding money. Because we're just gonna be saving money and not put it back to facilities and services for the citizens while we're taxing. So, I agree with Rob what you said, but it was discussed with finance committee. Fund source was identified through those discussions. And the main source, as of right now, is general funding money. That is increasing ten, eleven percent on an annual basis. But at the same time, we've got state money coming in now, we've got county money coming in now. Uh, we've got some grants coming in now. MDP is about to start going out for fundraising activities, sponsorships, things like that. It's the same process we did on Kids Kingdom. Because Kids Kingdom, we budgeted one hundred percent of that cost. And then we moved forward with the project and MDP started their fundraising efforts. And they fundraising would have had the cost already, it's still ongoing. And it's, again, it's, it's, that system's been done with Kids Kingdom, the same system for preschools. We were under the impression, I was under the impression, I'm not gonna speak for mayor, I was under the impression that we were good to keep moving forward, which we did, because we'd never know our true cost until we opened the bid. And whenever we open the bid, that's the only time we know the true cost. And we've seen that multiple times over the past several years, whether it's a road project, uh, or whatever it is. We may think we know until you get the documents and throw it out there and let people actually put a pencil to it, we don't know what that cost is. And we did open it, uh, I did wait a week or so before I brought to council. And because you guys had a heavy lift on the flowers. And knowing we had time, again, under the impression that we've been given, it's moving forward. It's like, I need to get through that first before we throw something else on top of it. Because we can wait, know this to them, and they'll have time to address it. So, you know, and it's frustrating tonight, and no disrespect to anybody, but we send emails out, please let us know if you have any other questions, any concerns. Nothing comes up until we get to meeting. And then. You did, you did. I'm just talking about since ninety-nine. Ninety-nine, but nothing comes out and then I'm not prepared. Because I don't know if you guys have answers or don't have answers. I've asked twice and there's nothing there. So I don't know what to present to you guys, because the whole is total.
I think the other part about that too, folks, you know, the whole process that you said, our goal was never to alienate anybody. Um, our goal was to continue to keep it going as we thought we needed to because it's been a project that it's been on the forefront, um, for a long, long time. Uh, it's also, you know, making the best of situations that we had to make the best of. And again, you lose the two folks, you know, you lose your city attorney is one thing. You lose the person who is working for the city attorney that's managing all the bids. And you gotta keep going, and we did that in a couple of different ways. And I really appreciate Roger and his team stepping up and saying, hey, we'll take it because we wanna get it right. So, yeah, we're, there's a lot of pieces that go in here that now, um, put us in a, in a position that we're in now. So, to enroll all the way back, you know, and roll it forward, I'll say this. I, I, Karen was there yesterday, you know, Mayor Battle gave a presentation, you know, the one thing he said, you know, twenty-six different times in the thirty-two minute speech, whatever it was, you know, quality life. And I think, you know, when it comes to that, that this, you know, our community, part of what we've talked about, the community center, is having something that continues to grow with our community. So that's why it's always been something that we've kept in the forefront. We've talked, had the community, you know, input, put the pieces together. I think, and I may not be right, but I think at the last work session we had, which we were in L shape with here, which was when we showed you what we had at that time, based on the community input that we received, and that's when we had fun with the name and, and, and continued through that. You know, that, that really was the last opportunity we had as a collective group to show it to you. And then, you know, to, to, to bring it, and then we've continued down the path of, of, of going forward. And I do think that the one, you know, in, in, in the world of, you know, where they're better than come, you know, we hope that you do support this financially, knowing that the worst case scenario is we're gonna draw down the money over a three-year period like you talked about. The best case scenario is at least half of this and probably more is funded through MVP from a community basis, because there's multiple organizations that have already spoken to us about when it's funded, we then have something to come forward with. Again, council has to hope that that gets done. But I don't think we've ever been in a better position with them to have folks that now will go out and obtain the monies that are out there that people want to give us. So, in my opinion, yes, based on what you're saying and how you just presented it, we could have done a better job of getting it to you guys, but in the same sense, um, I think it will work well for all of us. And that's why, you know, when I said it Monday night, I meant it. I'm glad to have everybody back in a point where we're really focused on these things. So that's when we're best, is we don't miss things when we're talking, hey, what about this? What about this? Where are we? And we've been working really hard to keep this going while others have been working really hard to get the flowers going. And, 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 you know, and that's a thirty-seven million dollars, you know, project that, you know, had, had, did not have, and maybe you guys worked really hard from a scrutiny standpoint, but, and maybe it was done better. But we've tried to do both of them and get them both going. So we'll take our responsibility for that. But I guess as I go through it, I still ask for council approval on this, dependent on verifying that our legal counsel feels like we're covered. And if the legal counsel doesn't feel like we met all the criteria that was needed, then I would say we don't, and then we don't go forward with it. I wholeheartedly believe that there's no way I would wanna do that.
Okay, in the future, since we can't go backwards, let's talk about the future and how we. Uh, we gave, council gave approval for design, gave money for design. And then, that was the last. My expectation was, having worked on many large capital projects, that when the design was completed, it would be brought back to us. We would be allowed to digest that, maybe make some comments or some suggestions as far as, you know, what we had heard from our constituents that were not part of the committees that have been used for the project. And then we would say, okay, we're ready to bid. This is what, you're right, this is wonderful, let's go get a bid, let's go forward. That's what I was, that was what my expectation was. Then, when the bids came in, we would be notified, the bids are coming in on the next day. If you wanna attend the bid opening, welcome to, otherwise, we'll send you the tab as soon as the bids are open. We wouldn't have been informed each step along the way, this is happening, this is happening, this is happening, and this is happening. It's been a vacuum. We have not been getting information. In the future, if we could get that information, I think this could have been a very smooth, easy lift. And I'm not gonna point fingers or say it's, you know, whatever. But we have to communicate as a team. We are a team, we have to work together. Maybe we haven't asked enough questions, maybe we didn't even know it's time to ask those questions. Because we didn't have that trigger, we didn't know, okay, it's time for us to go out for a bid. Then we would have been expecting it. But as it was, you know, the last we heard and the last version of this was back in March. And so, it's been frustrating.
It, it has been, I agree with you, and I think the good news based on what you said is what this council has done. We're gonna have ample opportunity to accomplish that. You know, when we look to what are we gonna do with Sunshine Oaks, what are we gonna do with Hexadown? What are we gonna do with some of these other projects? We'll absolutely do that, you know, I think we want to do that, it's our goal. And again, our goal is just to keep the train on the tracks and keep it going.
But, but that said, I mean, what we're gonna do with Sunshine Oaks and this, and this, and this, we have to be really careful because we are fixing them before you're getting ready to spend, getting ready to write our check. Getting our checkbook, that's it. Those other things are gonna be put in the book.
I mean. I'm sorry, I need to, I'll take responsibility for the way I communicate.
I'm really not trying to point fingers, I'm just, a process, our team, we get more.
I appreciate tonight's conversation, okay, I do. So I'll take responsibility for that. From my point of view, I sent that email out in August, and commission's gonna approve this in September. It will go to bid in October. You know, to me, I'm telling you guys, your timeline, I mean, I got no feedback. So, that's my perspective, and I'll do a better job of not making assumptions on my part. Moving forward, because like Mayor said, we got a power station, we got the substation, we got pickleball courts, we've got a wet center, there's a lot of stuff coming up. Just that, uh, we need to work as a team and the ordinance situation to keep it forward.
I'm your phone. Sorry, I was a little distracted. Um, so, you know, number one, I mean, I'll say, okay, look, I've been a little disengaged over the past year. Um, I'm not gonna apologize for that. I got a full-time job and I'm trying to do the best I can with everything that I've got. At the same time, I try to be engaged as much as I can. And when I get the package, I read the information, if I have questions, I'll call. Steve, you and I talked last Wednesday, maybe, I think, Tuesday or Wednesday?
The time before Thanksgiving.
Yeah, I mean, it was right before Thursday. Um, my only concern, really, I mean, I like the project. My only concern is where's the money coming from? However long, you know, however long to pay for it. Um, I wholeheartedly agree that MVP can help raise a lot of money. Um, at the same time, having done a lot of government contracting and live on congressional ads and those things, they're coming back. And so, making sure that we have a, a, a backstop. I love the way you, you know, a backstop in case they don't raise that amount of money. Um, you never know what's gonna happen with, with other companies or other people. They want to be able to donate money, they want to be able to do things, and then all of a sudden something happens and they can't. So as a risk mitigation for that, I would like to see for this, a, you know, fully identify, hey, this is where the funds can come from. I think in twenty-four and twenty-five, we said two million. Um, and, you know, so I think four million out of the twelve, at least. My, from what I read was we're hoping to get four million out of the twelve as part of MVP raising funds. Um, I, I just saw twenty, you know, two million in twenty-four and two million in twenty-five. Um, is there more or less than that? I mean, it looks like we're banking on MVP providing a significant amount of funds for this facility.
Well, I don't think there's any question, but, yeah, we, we wrote, it's eleven million less. The Garrett, I said a million something, four hundred dollars, four million forty that we've already secured via county commissioner and grant, so it's really ten million dollars that we, that you guys are looking at, let's make sure it's accounted for. Of which, a million five is in the budget this year, right Teddy?
I think it's two million.
Say, can you come?
It's one point five, we can raise it to two.
Okay. So it'd be two million dollars, and so there's eight million dollars left that, and again, you're right, that has to be accounted for, um, to make sure it work out. And I would expect, and I guess I would have always expected, at least five million dollars of that to be in MVP. But that's, again, part of what, it's a, it's.
That, that's, that's, I, I hope they can do that. If they can't, we're gonna need to find the five million dollars.
I go back to it and go, that's how I got here, you know, again, part of where a council in two thousand and two, that overcome two hundred and seventy thousand dollar project, we didn't have the money. And we said, we feel like we can go raise this money, but to get started, we need you to agree that whatever's left over, you take care of, to build a concession facility. And they said, go forward. Two years later, it was only eighty thousand dollars that they paid. Again, that's the same thing that's happened with Kids Kingdom, it's kinda how, you know, it's, it's, but, but you're right, I disagree that. I, I, and the other part is Roger has other funding structures that he can pull out. We've talked about some of the debt service piece that we have that he can just extract over. There's money there, so it doesn't completely take our checkbook, but it is agreed that you would have to say, yes, go forward. And then there's work to do to go cover.
Okay.
What I, what I answered the other night, all that top money was from general fund.
And concluded what, how Mayor was talking about, probably the top money was exactly, pretty much. Yeah, and, and look, I, hey, MVP, MVP does it, great, I'm, I'm proud of that. And I'm proud of the community for being able to help with that. I just also, at the same time, from a risk mitigation standpoint, hey, all that comes to, to, to nigh, what do we do in the interim, right? How, and how do we, how do we cover that? And the second piece of that is from a, from. And the second piece of that is, from a, from a, from an opportunity cost standpoint, all about cost, all about quality of life, all about doing those things. It's an awesome project. At the same time, when I got on council in twenty sixteen, one of the big things that I had is Palmer Park, looks today like it did when I engaged, asked my wife to marry me in two thousand and two. Now, we've expanded it, done a great job, we put effort towards a, 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 a baby plan there. I would really like to see us as well, put some more investment towards that. I know we've already got some things that we're doing that, but put some more emphasis towards that from the same point of investing in the quality of life for our kids and what they're doing out there. You know, and, and I just, I just want to put that out there because the whole cost of that entire plan was roughly about twelve million dollars. Of all five, like, five phases of that. And that could be also a huge gem for our community.
Well, and I, I think that's kind of the, that's, that's, that's the purpose where I...
Oh, no, yeah.
If we, if we make this decision, we're, we are writing the check. We're, we're saying, okay.
Yeah, I'm with you.
So any of those, other projects, we have to go out and see if we...
I agree. I agree, and I'm, I'm just, I'm just saying that, I mean, we've invested right now in Hexagon, we got Bosworth out there, we're gonna do a great job with that, it's gonna be amazing. Invest, we want to invest in this, well, it's gotta park, and it's like, you know, at, at, at what point do we start looking at, hey, let's, let's maximize what we have and make that best, and then grow. And I, look, that's the balance of what we do, right? As, as a team, we gotta figure that out. And I'm all for what's a good project, and this is a good project. I don't want anybody to think that. I just want to make sure that we have, where's the money coming from in case something happens? And then we need to have that discussion of where do we want to spend our money? Just like we did Paul back in, you know, twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen, whatever year that was. It was pre-cod, I've never...
And then, and I do think part of going back to what Teddy was talking about, with the CIP list, there's two things. One, we, there is a long list that we can get to, but part of what we did in talking to you guys when we presented, was talking about the different, um, you know, the stages that it takes to do a project and to be able to get you good numbers, that in turn, look at those bigger projects. And I think there's money in the budget this year for a, the next revitalization of Palmer Park, like the phase two, there's the engineering piece that's in there for that, for, for you guys. The, uh, Brownsbury and Burgery and Roundabout, engineering is in there. So there's several different pieces that are this phase that would give you guys, and then last, comprehensive plan, which you said mid-summer is when we probably have a good understanding. We can't wait that long. But we hear you loud and clear as far as, we'd really like to see the laundry list of opportunity.
Yeah.
And, and, and I think one of the things we want to do better is a laundry list of opportunity that has real numbers, not numbers we hope that are right. And, and so, we hear you loud and clear that that's something that's important.
And you haven't even drawn in the safety aspect of the fire and the police. And, and need for, when we update, it's, um, you know, those things. Oh, that still has to be considered too. And we just committed, um, up to ten million dollars with the general planning piece, and we're leaving for the bomb, so... And if we're ready...
I think the ARPA money, so, so when the, the building costs four million and ARPA money was five point two, there's a million, five point one, there's a million one to get that project as far as the revitalization started, that would cover all of it. You're right, that's part of it.
Right, and we just have to buy, as Steven I talked about, they have very expensive tours. And we also want to have, we also want a training center for them, they're seeing, sure. I mean, there are a lot of costs that we might still, you know, for the...
I, I can't argue a bit with all of that. I'll say this, though, I'm really proud of what collectively, council, mayor, department has. I'm really proud of where we are right now. I think, you know, there, there's a lot of need in the city of Madison, and there always has been. But there's so much better chance to fund all of that than we've had in years. And again, I'm really, you know, when you look at the Town Madison piece, you know, it's, it's a big lift, but it'll pay itself off, and when it does, you know, we, getting through this next, you know, seven to ten years, you get to the ten-year mark, and you got another, you know, eight to nine to ten million dollars that goes back into your general fund. You know, council set the, the city up for long-term success, the shorter-term success. Again, that's why it's so important to work with our school system, to make sure that the funding is appropriate. And again, you go back, you can find a quarter of a cent that in turn can generate two point five to two point seven million dollars a year, that when you bond that, gives us the ability to do bigger projects. And by that time, when we get through, you know, the middle of next year, we're gonna have that list to be able to put that money towards. So a lot of work to do together. You know, again, I, I don't change how I feel, I still think this is, and, and, and again, this is a two-year project, we're two years from this being done. So, doing it now puts us in a good position, and this community needs that facility as we've grown and matured, and now we have active adults, not just, let's eat and play bingo. Like I said, God help you if you speak between the two of those.
If we sign this, if we agree to this, when do we have to pay another million dollars?
As I invoice, five one.
It's how that invoice is entered. It's not necessarily, I don't think you face the bid, right, in terms of doing phase one or phase two? It's wherever the bills come due, they're gonna be due, right?
Yes, the bills can do. Armored freight price contract can't go above ten percent of that, and you bill, you pay it as a invoice. It's over the three-year period that we talked about the other night, and that's why I want to inform that the funding spread out over three years. Because, you know, we don't write a check for our twelve million bucks in day one. We slowly write that check over three years.
So if you put the period out, just ask you a question. So is this the bid packet for the pre-bid meeting that you all had? Is that what you're bringing in?
That's the stuff they gave me after everything was done.
After everything was done?
Yes.
Okay, so is this the stuff that we look, I mean, is this what we're using? Like, if I wanted to see what the specs were of the bid, and I wanted to understand what we asked them to get in, would I be able to see it in here?
Yes, they put the bid documents in that. So that's just a history of everything that's been done.
Okay, so, and, and again, I'm not trying to be difficult, but I'm looking at the advertisement for the bids for the general contractor, and it said that sealed proposals were received, at the City of Madison, room one thirty on October thirteenth. And there's an advertisement schedule. But then, we were, oh, bid, we opened the bid on October twenty-fifth. So, the papers that I'm seeing in terms of what we provided to the contractors to bid on.
So I've not read through that information related. Again, I'm not a bid guy, I'm a procurement guy. Uh, we had Noah Van Pearson do the bid for us. If, I wish I'd known he had some bid questions, because we could have Rob here tonight to answer all the bid questions, but I can get answers.
Well, I mean, I'm gonna just be real frank right now. Teddy asked for the bid documents in an email, and your response was, I think you had them. And what we had Monday night made me ask more questions. I kept trying to follow up because I wasn't seeing the things that I normally see. But I, I didn't have a whole lot of time to digest it because I only heard about it right before Thanksgiving that the bid was due. So it makes the packet on whatever day, Wednesday. I'm looking at it, and it's like, okay, this looks different. There's things, I can't put my finger on it, but there are things that are not there that I'm normally seeing. So it takes me a while to figure out who's got them. And so, you know, I'm looking at schedules and trying to figure this out because I want to be real careful. I don't want us to approve a bid if we don't know, because I can't...
I get it, I understand what you're saying, but, again, I've never done a bid. I don't know what documents you need and what documents you don't need. I know that we contracted with, with Noah Van Pearson to do it. I know you've got experience with them in projects.
Oh, yes, I, I...
So I trust them, and they've done it multiple times for multiple municipalities and, and organizations.
No, but you're, no, but we gotta have the stuff here somewhere in this building. We've gotta be able to access the ads, that it, you know, we get the date, that we've noticed it, that why is it saying October thirteenth is the bid opening, when it was opened on the twenty-fifth?
And again, those, you know, I, I can have Rob do a call, and he can answer every question you have because he's, he's on top of it.
I think we'll have to do this, and I'll, council will do that.
Yeah, we are.
All right.
We are, no question.
At best.
And I, I think in the future, we need to not do bids this way. I mean, we can't.
Okay, clear on that.
Okay. So, okay. So the, we have a, a resolution to approve the bid. Uh, the mayor has suggested that we do it contingent. I don't know if anybody wants to have a motion and a second to discuss this, or if you think that's the right path. Because we're in a work session right now, we haven't moved to, oh, yet.
I, I, I'm not comfortable with that.
Is that for Luke or...? Oh, sorry, Connie, you can ask for that. I'm so sorry, I'm just sitting down on down. I was deep in this, I'm trying to...
Okay. Is it, I'm just asking, is it possible, questions, whether it is till Monday night or something, or the thing is, y'all have time?
Yes.
Project everything? I mean, I'm available next week, we need to come out, do a special session then, about yes or no at that point. Do y'all have time to figure this out?
We can postpone, thanks.
If you want, offer to let us know, yes, no, whatever it is, we all are thinking. And then we can move forward. And or do I...
Right, that is an option. We can postpone again, to do know when the bid expires.
Monday, Friday, Saturday.
Are they in December, I...
We should have Monday. We need to do those things.
So what, what are we asking till next?
Oh, I forgot, that's...
But we could do about six thirty, I did six thirty.
Sure.
Okay.
And again, as, as far as the scheduling, is, if I can simply get someone to phone, but then, uh, something being argued is asked, in terms of whether it's followed. It'll be very quick, and if we can schedule it tomorrow, I can then report it to the council. Whether I'm happy that things met, and I'm sure that it wasn't, like I said, it seems out there, I'd be shocked if they felt to be, but I'm changed concerns as far as that, if they were, in fact, met all the way through the start.
Let me say, I better not get a bid from you that doesn't have this stuff. And so, I, yeah, I'm gonna have to see it, there's just no way. I'm, I'm ready to move forward. Can I open up our special session and entertain a motion to postpone until next Monday night or...
What difference?
That, that motion, do you have a motion, you have a second? Um, Teddy, we have a motion on the floor to postpone.
On Monday night.
Until when?
Monday night.
Monday night, are you in town?
At six thirty.
Is that before, is that before the bid's made?
Before the bid expires.
Yes, it expires until the eighth of...
So we can give them time to check the, whether the documents were done correctly.
And does that give us enough time if they weren't, that we didn't bid it?
I don't think we'd fix it at this point. If they don't notice it and it's not advertised right, then we just have to start over. And we, we can't violate the law. We have to follow, right? So we just have to check. But I, I'm not prepared to do it conditional. Okay, so we have a motion on the floor and a second to postpone the resolution.
Karen, motion.
Karen had the motion, and Connie had the second. Okay, ready for the motion?
And to clarify, Monday at six thirty.
Monday at, well, Monday, okay. I think we'll notice the meeting, we'll do a special.
Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Councilmember Rollesky?
Aye.
Council President Bartlet?
Aye.
Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Councilmember Shaw? Councilmember Seifer?
Aye.
Thank you all for this work session. I appreciate everyone who contributed to this tonight.
I'd just like to ask if there's any other information you guys need, or you're not, please let it go. And I have a label, if we could add the information label tonight, if we can.
Do you, do you know if they've got a breakdown of the, the, you know, you don't ask for, like, this, X, Y?
I did notice only impacting discussion, like, they used a four hundred dollars worth of, of, per foot, and the, we didn't see much of any investment in that, so...
No, no, Karen, I have a question.
I guess, I guess, we're, what is our next step on impact fees? Um, know that we've got all this information, I just understand.
Um, I think we need to give, uh, well, first of all, since Councilmember Shaw is not here, I'd like to give him time to absorb, and, um, and we're gonna, we have this meeting recorded because we have a vote, so there'll be a, a motion to approve an archive as well, uh, probably on the next, uh, day. So our next step, I think, is after everyone has had time to digest, um, would be to ask, uh, council members whether they would like to proceed forward to figure out whether they want to have a first reading of an ordinance, how they would want to... Mary Beth has outlined that there's certain grandfathering issues that would have to be worked out. There's a few updates, I think, to the charts, based on some information that we have now that he might not have had in bay. Um, so it might take another work session, probably, or we have...
I, I would think so. I mean, I'll be honest with you guys, I'd, I'd like to put these deeper on, and then let's look at that.
Yeah. Well, and, and I will tell you this, I really appreciate all of you being here tonight, but I, um, and, and I want to do regular work sessions, I've heard you loud and clear. I think we, we get a lot of good information. The mayor shared with us about the road projects and other things that are coming up, and that was great. But, um, I'm not really sure I can see us doing this in December because of the holidays and our schedule. Um, so, can I just have you all look at your calendars for Wednesday, January fourth? And tell me if that's a good day, because it gets us out of the holidays to revisit some things, and you all send more topics of things. I know Mary Beth has shared one with me, um, that she's looking at on a capital project and, uh, and other topics that we might have, but if, if January fourth...
Mm-hmm, good for me.
So, I'm, I'm gonna throw this out there.
Okay.
Um, so, if you do January fours...
Yeah.
That means folks are gonna have to kind of know what you want the week before. Most people are gonna be ignoring, right?
Okay.
So I think, quite frankly, if we want to get something out of it, we look sometime the next week, or even the eighteenth. And I'm going to ask, and I'm just gonna be the liner of the group.
Yes.
Um, having work sessions the same week that we have other commitments going on is kind of a, a pain.
Yeah.
So if we can kind of offset work session and council meetings and those things, so we're not like, some of us are, are, are gone, you know, four nights of the week.
Right.
So...
I'd rather do it the other way, where you have it in the back, because it makes me more time to be on, because I am...
Yeah, I, I guess, the other thing is for, for folks that we're gonna be asking to bring something to this meeting, if we're asking them to do it on the fourth, I think we're really kind of not giving them enough time to do that. It's, because you're asking, you're asking them essentially to do something on a holiday before, right before New Year's, and that's just...
So the eighteenth would be probably a regular day against the third Wednesday.
I don't know. I, I would just say not the first week of January. I don't think that's going to...
Okay.
Get the result that we want.
All right, um, so is the, would the eleventh work for everyone to kind of shoot toward the next work session?
What are you gonna have on the work session, gentlemen? That's the, the historic preservation commission makes on the line.
Okay.
So, um, and I could get a staff person to cover that, like, or maybe a mission, you'd up here, but if you have a need downstairs on the eleventh, I could get a staff person. But if, if planning is not needed, then...
Well, one of the, I don't know if you're ready, but you had mentioned the topic, um, about the, uh, major league baseball requirements.
I've got, um, a conference called with Major League Baseball tomorrow, and so I will have a better sense of that. I would expect that we could be ready, um, not January fourth, I think, with the comments. Um, but we could be, I'm hoping that we could be ready to do a very, to at least have some conversation. But I'll...
Would we be able to have, um, updated impact fee information if we were going to grandfather out if the council were interested in hearing one?
Um, I, I guess I would want to get a little clarification on what it is you're looking for.
I can, I can make the deal on that, um, in terms of what I think, if there's enough interest. And, and there may be other topics that council wants to discuss and tag up. Okay, so we'll just pencil in the eleventh... Okay, so we'll just pencil in the eleventh. Um, I may have to start a little later, like six, instead of five thirty, I have something that day, but I can cut it short.
This is a possibility, I mean, I know we've got plenty of people.
So I have...
No, it's fine, it's just...
I have a problem with the eighteenth, 'cause that's, it, our council meetings are, are on the same night as my, or afternoon as my library board meetings, that y'all appointed me to. So it's really hard for me to get here for those.
So the eleventh, and you're saying maybe six P.M. instead of five thirty on the eleventh?
Yes. More eleven, I'm thinking, but, um, also...
We also don't have the ability to adjust the length of council meetings based on what's there, so we need to stack one council meeting with, you know, a lot of discussion, at the second council meeting, it's pretty, you know, not a lot of presentations, and be able to, you know, help with that. And we can have a shorter council meeting and a work session, and then a, you know, substantial council meeting, and be able to do it that way too.
Sure, if we had a short presentation.
One other thing while we're talking about it is, and I know this right go, but outside appropriations, you know, there's, I, I, I think, we have options. Last time, we didn't have as many come do presentations, we simply, you know, were confident we could give them the money, and then we don't have the length there while others you guys, you know? So I, I would say this, if you would, um, please look at the outside appropriations and see if there's anybody that you truly just need to come in front of us and be able to give, are they doing what they said they would do? And if not, we can simply put that on, um, consent agenda or approval. If you've already delegated the money and it's already there, and we could get that out that way, we could save some time, so, okay?
Maybe only new ones, that they need to come to explain their program, or anything we've approved in the past, more familiar.